You snuck in. We are ready to go. Thank you for your patience, everybody. We are starting a little bit behind today. Waiting for video to come on.
You got to coordinate. Have you seen that movie? Boomerang? Coordinate the mushroom belt. That's the like, I know, but everyone thinks that's it.
We apologize for the technical difficulty. We will try to fix this as soon as possible. All right, let's get it started. So, good morning, everybody. Today is August 20th, 2024. This is our regular Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake, and we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence. And I believe we have one from Vice Chair Crandall and another one from Supervisor Simon.
Yes, so I'd like to offer this moment of silence to Frank Hodge, born November 3rd, 1946, in Napa, California. Frank passed away peacefully in his home in Upper Lake, surrounded by his cherished family. A proud member of the Cherokee Nation and retired custodian for the Upper Lake School District, where he worked for 23 years. Frank leaves behind a legacy of love, strength, laughter, and community. Frank was the father of two sons, Sonny Frankie and John Bubba Hodge, and one daughter, Sarah Sis Sanchez. His family also includes his son-in-law, Rob Sanchez, and daughters-in-law Samantha Hodge and Amber Schalver. Frank's pride and joy were his 10 grandchildren, Ryan Bayer, Aiden, and Jordan Hoak, Angel, Alex, Chelsea, Isabel, and Jimmy Sanchez, Colin Sheldon, and John McKellen, Graham Hodge, known as Mac. Frank was raised in a very large family, which included 13 siblings, and is very loved by his brothers and sisters, nieces, and nephews. Like to just kind of give a, when I won a supervisor and started serving the district, Frank called me all the time about the hitch, about the streams in Upper Lake, and was on me about the vegetation. Very involved, very loving of animals. And he was known as Frankie, Uncle Frank, Dad, Grandpa Frank, Mayor Hodge, and the Dogfather. He'll be greatly missed. There are a lot of folks in Upper Lake that knew Frank. He was also involved with the school quite often when it came to our baseball and football games. He was often a chaperone and whatnot. A celebration of life for Frank will be held on September 21st. It will be a horseshoe tournament. And so I don't know the exact time yet. I'll be looking out for it. And when I find out, I'll announce it in my calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I'd like to take today, actually, this will be the last day I get to do it as elected official, but commemorating Deputy Sheriff Robert Paul Rumfelt, who his end of watch was on August 27th, 2017. He was a veteran, was one of our family members, going to be greatly missed. So, he served three years for Deputy Sheriff. He was also for nine years with the Lakeport Police. Comes to every meeting with me, memory of my family. This is a dog. He had, I don't know if this was the first canine unit that he brought to Lake County at the Lakeport Police in 2001, Juneau, but the tribe stepped up and helped him purchase that. But just want to commemorate today. I know that we've had five officers that have lost their lives here in Lake County during service. But today, I commemorate my cousin, Rob Rumfelt, my hero. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pasko, would you please lead us in the place?
My gift's through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item, item number four. Any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda from staff or board members? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items any Board of Supervisor wishes to pull from the consent agenda? And I will be pulling item 5.4 for further discussion later on today. And that is the only item at this moment. I'm going to open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Either come up to the microphone with a request or raise your hand in Zoom. And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, we'll take that on, that item up as quickly as possible here. But let's continue with our timed items first. Next item is our 9:02 a.m., public input. Anybody wish to speak to the Board of Supervisors on anything not on the current agenda? Please come on up. And the first person I do have is Elaine Brown.
Good morning, Board. I just want to leave some information for the public, if I can just put it here. And it's from the California Advisory Committee on Geographical Name Changes. And I don't understand, I was called another county concerning the Kelseyville name change. And it was their understanding that this has already been sent to them, and it's out of your hands in order to have a vote on it. I'm just the messenger of that information. I haven't done massive. He talked about the Squaw Valley situation where that had gone here. So, I'm leaving clipped ones for the board here, and the rest are for the public if they wish to see where Lake is mentioned on this information. My whole goal in this was originally to save the business owners from a lot of money being spent to change that name. Also, community means a lot to stay together and learning more. I realized it's a pretty big situation. There are ways that you can probably, if this has gone there and it's out of your hands, there are ways you could probably do something in order to maybe not have it happen, but bring about the community. If you're interested, I have ideas. I have seen things happen in life that you don't think can happen. But when people get right in the situations, government people give grace. I think we all need to stay together and be kind to each other and not be polarized, which is often a tactic of people that do not like community. Also, I just would like to say, I know our monies are on electronic books. I really believe you should look into having a hard copy of the county accounting books. It is easy for electronics to have two sets of books. And I would like to see myself hard copy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to make a quick comment, and I don't mean this as a negative comment. I think we just all need to learn. If we can try to use the SQ word rather than saying the word, because it is deemed derogatory by those who were called that. And so if we can try to not say that word, that would be appreciated by all that are affected by it. There's a reason why the SQ word is no longer allowed in our geographic names. Just trying to, I'm trying to learn, and I'm trying to put it out there for everyone to hear that it'd be more appropriate to call it SQ word rather than the actual word, as it is a derogatory term.
No disrespect meant.
Thank you. Is there any other public input in the room or in the Zoom room? Let's go ahead and start with Donna Makowitz in the Zoom room.
Good morning, Board. Donna Makowitz, Redbud Audubon. I'd like to thank the county for an outstanding two days of science. The Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium, Angela De Palma-Dow from Water Resources, Dr. Janine Pfeifer, Sam Houston, all the team put on a phenomenal conference with over 50 science sessions, the poster event, the movie Hobbiton, Big Lake Science. Everything was simply amazing. I encourage everyone to watch the videos up on YouTube, and I hope we won't have to wait another 25 years for another one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Donna did a great job as well. She didn't want to mention it. I know she's being humble, but she did awesome, so.
She did do a presentation, yes. Maria Khan on Zoom.
Good morning, Board. I hope you're all well today. My name's Maria Khan, and I'm certain that I am not going to be the first person to bring up this subject. But the roadwork that's being done by PG&E is disgusting. It's terrible, to say the least. We had our road, High Valley Road in Clear Lake Oaks, rechip sealed the entire length, three and a half miles, in 2021. And it was the best I've ever seen or driven on since I've been in my home for 24 years. That money came from brass fields. It was about $400,000, I believe, is what we were told that they put into that road. And now PG&E has torn it up, and they're just attempting to patch areas of the road when their trucks traversed the entire three and a half miles daily for almost a year and crushed it and just damaged it tremendously. So, the work that's being done right now by Machados and Sons is not acceptable to us. We're actually rather livid about what's happening. And you need to know that we want that road rechip sealed, the entire three and a half miles that they rode their big trucks on and parked them on. They've crushed the edges, and now they're really just trying to patch it and move on. And we're not having it. So, I'm asking the Board, please, to use your influence and power to get PG&E to fix our roads and put their money into it. They are a huge corporation with plenty of money, and there's no reason why they can't restore our road to the way they found it when they first started this underground project. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate all the hard work that you do, and I look forward to some sort of comment. I did submit a public comment or a request to the Roads Department with pictures so that you can see what has happened to our road. Once the first rains start, the cracks are going to absorb that water, and the road's just going to fall apart, even with their little patch jobs going on, because they're missing huge portions of the road. So, I just wanted to put that comment in there, and thank you again for all your hard work. Have a great day.
Thank you for your comment. And I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber. So, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Next is our Pet of the Week. And we have an incredibly cute pet of the week.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us be here. I'm Jessica Lishman with Deputy Director of Animal Control. Sorry, two introductions today. I have with us Joel Soldana. He is our newest officer. He's holding Grace. She is close to three-month-old German Shepherd puppy. We currently have a lot of puppies right now. So, there are seven more of her, seven females, in her litter. We have probably three or four more litters right now as well. Tons of adults. If you're interested in adopting, please do so. If not, that's fine too. But please alter your animals and keep them inside. We'd appreciate that very much right now. You can come down to 4949 Hellbush Drive or call us 707-263-0278.
And at this moment in time, is your shelter full?
We have been full for months upon months upon months, yes.
I just want to put a pitch out there. Please help us out. Please spay and neuter your animals, because it's difficult to deal with the influx of animals, especially puppies that come in again and again and again. But thank you so much for what you do, and I sure hope Grace finds a home.
What are the other breeds of the puppies?
Pretty much Shepherds is everything we have. We do have some really cute, they're not quite old enough yet, Catahoula hounds that might be coming around. They're real, they're cute, Merle. Some maybe like pit shepherd husky, but German Shepherds. We probably have, between the puppies and the adults, 40, 45? Of just German Shepherds right now. So, if you're a German Shepherd fan, please come down.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And move on to our 9:04, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the 31st Day of August 2024 as International Overdose Awareness Day. And Supervisor Green, and please come on up. I know we have quite a few folks in the audience.
How was everyone this morning? Good to see you. Proclamation Designating the 31st Day of August 2024 is International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global campaign held every August 31st to end overdose. Remember without stigma those who have died and to acknowledge the grief of family and friends left behind. Whereas in 2022, 35 people fatally overdosed in Lake County, which is the second highest overdose death rate in the state of California and three times higher than the California rate. Lake County's rate was 56 per 100,000 people compared with California's rate of 19 people deaths per 100,000 people. And that data is from the California Overdose Dashboard. Whereas all overdose deaths are preventable via access to harm reduction, health care, substance use prevention and treatment services, and naloxone, the opioid overdose reversal agent. And whereas people who use drugs continue to be stigmatized and marginalized, discouraging them from accessing care and treatment. And whereas every person should have access to resources that prevent overdose and other causes of drug-related mortality, including naloxone, sterile needles, drug testing, and medication for addiction treatment. And whereas in Lake County, dedicated providers, excuse me, prescribers of medication for addiction treatment, harm reduction providers, behavioral health providers, and addiction recovery programs work tirelessly to provide residents with these resources. And whereas local communities play a crucial role in eliminating the stigma of addiction, including residents, elected officials, parents, private and public organizations, hospitals, law enforcement, first responders, schools, and colleges. And whereas SafeRx Lake County, an overdose prevention coalition comprised of local agencies and organizations, including Lake County Behavioral Health and Lake County Health Services, will host its fourth annual commemoration of International Overdose Awareness Day in Upper Lake Park on Saturday, August 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate August 31st, 2024 as International Overdose Awareness Day and urges all Lake County citizens to join in this important observance, passed and adopted this day by the Board of Supervisors. That's a hard one to applaud. But anyone want to speak to this? I know we definitely have had some challenges in our community recently.
Thank you so much. The event went off really well on Saturday. We had, it was well attended with great stories, heartbreaking stories. But we were able to connect people with resources and commemorate those that have been lost. And I appreciate you reading this today.
Do we have any comments from the board?
I appreciate this proclamation. It kind of slows things down a little bit as you listen to it. But I know that there's been a lot of work that's been happening. And I'm looking forward to that work coming back to the Board of Supervisors so decisions can be made. And that's how we deal with our opioid settlement funds in order to truly add to the services that are already there. I think there's a lot of services, and a lot of people are working hard. But sometimes we're missing some key components because we lack the resources to provide those components. And I think we have a potential to make great change with those settlement funds. And so I'm looking forward to those conversations and decreasing the number of folks that are not just experiencing overdose, but obviously experiencing the worst of the worst, which is a death from an overdose. I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we have seen a slight decrease from year to year on overdose deaths. And I'm hoping that if that's true, and hopefully that is true, what I'm saying, that we continue that trend and continue supporting the work that has been happening.
Yeah, I got, I got a comment, just coming on. Yeah, all the great work being done. I know there's a lot to be done. But each one of us, I don't know if everybody is, but you know, you take CPR training. You never know when you need to respond to a family member or other things. But I just attended the Tulley Boat Festival that Big Valley did, and it's reaching every community. There was a naloxone training, so you get updated, and they were handing it out. So, I know the hard work that you guys are doing all the time. You never know when you have to be a first responder. If you have time, if you're at an event, take that training. You know, make sure it's accessible. You know, these things, you know, you can save a life, even if you're not expecting to. But getting the training and have an opportunity, have an accessibility on the naloxone, and I think I'm saying it all right, so, the training. So, if you're at an event, take the training, because you never know. Have it in your household. You know, we all have friends that are, you know, or family members that are dealing with some of these things. And you never know when you may have to respond. So, just, I want to just bring awareness to that. And I know the county's doing a really good job. I see it at a lot of different events, with our behavioral health, with Department of Social Services, tribal health, everybody. So, if you have that opportunity, like I said, I think it's just as important as being CPR trained too to respond. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our items is our 6.4910 a.m. item, Consideration of Recision of Tax Deed Hearing for Property Located at 9802 Ventory Drive Cobb, California, APN Number 052092-020-000. And before I pass this on to the Treasurer-Tax Collector, I do want to open the floor for my colleague, Supervisor Green, as he would like to make a statement or a request.
Yeah, just before we dive into the ins and outs of holding a hearing, my observation of the materials presented... of the materials presented suggests at least that would not be appropriate to hold such hearing as it's been noticed for various reasons. One, we have somebody who bid, somebody who defaulted on that sale. There's no real consummated sale that we should be considering a rescission of a tax deed that has never been issued. So there may be other things that would be more appropriate for a closed session item if a potential litigation exists, but I don't see the facts as they're presented would allow for the proper conduct of a rescission of tax deed hearing as its agenda. So turn in to County Council and Mr. Sullivan to address that issue.
County Council, would you like to provide a response or guidance on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 3731A in particular, states that when a tax deed to a purchaser of property sold by the tax collector pursuant to this part is recorded and it is determined that the property should not have been sold, the sale may be rescinded by the Board of Supervisors under certain, subject to certain requirements and procedures. So the key phrase there, from my understanding of it, after speaking with Treasurer Tax Collector Sullivan, is the phrase pursuant to this part, the tax deed being recorded. That is a prerequisite to, for this rescission hearing, in order for this rescission hearing to be heard by your board. As I understand it, as it, currently the tax deed as it relates to this tax default sale has not been recorded. And Treasurer Tax Collector Sullivan can speak to that certainly. And just to give the board a few more provisions, the recordation of the deed requires, pre-requires the execution of the tax collector of the deed itself. And the execution, and then that was under Revenue and Taxation Code 3708.1. And then under Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3708, the execution of the deed pre-requires the full purchase, the payment of the full purchase price of it coming out of the tax default sale. And so one sequence leads to the other, and if any of those steps are missed, of course, it leads to the point where we're at, at under Section 3731 where it does, where a rescission hearing under this section requires that the tax deed be recorded. So Treasurer Tax Collector Sullivan can provide more details to that, but your board has the option. In light of my understanding of it, if with the petition for a hearing of a rescission being submitted and filed by the petitioner, at this point, your board has the option of denying the petition, not on the merits, because it can't be heard, but essentially denying it for lack of jurisdiction at this point because the tax deed has not been recorded under Section 3731.
And I'll just verify that at this point, our office has not received payment for the remaining balance, the $95,000 that's owed. This request for a hearing was brought pursuant to Subdivision B, and as County Council pointed out, that references Subdivision A requiring that recordation. So we have not executed the deed, we have not recorded it because we have not received that payment in full. So at this point, I realize it's up to your board, but I would, I would agree with County Council's assessment of the law.
All right, I want to check back in with the board, just so I know how to open up public comment and what we will be discussing. Is there an agreement to apply the rule that this has not met the criteria to be a public hearing to be heard at this moment in time? Or would you prefer to move forward with what is on our agenda today? Just looking for consensus. And I would suggest that maybe having a conversation on something that has not met the criteria potentially opens up other potential actions that we may not want to step into. Agree with County Council? And Supervisor Green? Okay, I have a consensus for that. So I am going to open up public comment to only speak of rescinding the item, not making a decision on the item itself. Just want to check in with County Council, is that the appropriate words to utilize today? That this item is being rescinded from the agenda, having not met the criteria to be heard in front of the Board of Supervisors for actual rescinding of tax deed because there is no tax deed to rescind?
That is one option for your board. It essentially would have the same effect, it's similar to pulling the item due to, for this, on the same grounds, essentially it's a lack of jurisdiction. The item cannot be heard because certain prerequisite requirements were not met in order for it to be heard, you know, for the item to be heard. Given that a petition has been filed, you know, that is the other option for your board in the alternative to not hear the item on the merits, but essentially just denying the petition for lack of jurisdiction. And that, in either case, in either option, the suggestion here would be to do it by motion.
I think we need to deny the petition, the lack of jurisdiction.
Okay.
Rather than just...
And I believe that is what the consensus is as well.
Yeah.
So at this moment in time, I will open it up for public hearing. At this moment, because of the action the board has discussing, there's no need to swear anybody in for this. This is just public comment on the rescinding due to lack of jurisdiction.
Your board may, on that issue, for the, on the rescission for lack of, rescinding the item for lack of jurisdiction, your board may also has that option to swear in any witnesses who may be able to testify to that issue.
And I'm looking for advice from County Council, move forward with doing a swearing in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So those of you who wish to speak on this item of the board having a lack of jurisdiction over what is being requested to us, please raise your hand and the oath will be read.
All right. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, so opening up public comment, please come on up. And again, this is solely about the board's consideration right now of rescinding the appeal due to lack of jurisdiction or the petition.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I need to apologize for my English. When I'm nervous, I cannot find a second sentence. My verbal performance is awful, but my written argument and written communication is much solid. So I would like to email or give some written after my short speech. This is first of all. Second of all, I thank you for you to bring this. Thank you so much. And I had a request through the email. I said, I need a witness to be the Zoom meeting because this is one-way, three-hour drive. So the witness want to testify. So I was with the witness during this transaction, okay? So just, I want to cut in the short. I don't want to take too much my, your guys' time. So the first of all, it's not I misunderstood the transaction. The witness is with me during we are online a bit, and he's high-educated, graduated from MIT, very experienced. We, we fall in the same trick. So this is, I request for deposit, this is my own money.
So this is, this is based on arguing right now whether it's in the jurisdiction or not of the board, not specifically to the petition.
Sure, sure, sure. I will not say the detail, okay? But I would like to give me the chance. I have to bring this issue to the city councilor to, as needed. So I would like to bring the written argument and have the testimony, witness, Zoom meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And, and another thing I want to mention, I'm in my 50s, so of course I lead the team member. We try to make a good business, but in my, in my thinking, is my age, you know, year, past year, so quick. So I want to do valuable things. So I was, has been doing the past few years to contribute to society. All the property, we are under NCO or Hopeing Center.
And again, I just, I just want to redirect you to the lack of jurisdiction that this board has over the item.
Sure, you're right. You're right. So, so just, first of all, just, just to give me opportunity to email, have a written argument. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe those were the, that was the only hand raised in both Zoom and in the chamber for the swearing of the oath. Did we get your name?
My name is Wen Nen Ni. You can call me Wen. Here at the Lake County, they call me Wen, W E N.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board and close public comment. And at this moment, we have a consensus. I believe that we were requested to make a motion.
I move that we rescind the petition for lack of jurisdiction. Is that right?
In fact, it's denial of the petition for a lack of jurisdiction.
Denial of the petition. So moved.
I'll second that motion and just offer to the person who spoke, we appreciate the difficulty of language here, but what we're deciding here today is that your petition is not something we can act on today. There are other things you may want to research. So I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is our 9:45 a.m. item, but it's 9:39, so let's go ahead and take up item 5.4, Approve Resolution Setting Rate of Pay for Election Officers for the November 5th, 2024 General Election. The reason that I pulled this is because there was no recommended action, and I know that we do have staff on with us today. If we can make sure and bring staff over into the panel, we have either, I saw Savannah earlier, I see Lourdes as well. I don't know who wanted to speak on behalf of the registrar of voters, but wanted to make sure that at least one of them had the ability to speak on what is being requested of the board today. And Savannah, it looks like you're ready to speak.
Hi, my name is Savannah Fait with the Lake County Registrar of Voters Office, and our recommended action is to approve the resolution setting rate of pay for the election officers for the November 5th, 2024 General Election. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we'll take any comment from the board. Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see none in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. Bringing it back for action for offering the resolution.
For the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatia?
Aye. Thank you very much. And that was too quick. Let's go ahead and take item 7.2, Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, Reappoint Mark Burkdahl and Lowell Grant to the Lake County Air Quality Management District Hearing Board pursuant to Health and Safety Code. I don't know if Doug is with us, but my opinion is that that's not a necessary individual needed at this moment. This is a pretty regular task. Any comments from board members?
Just, I don't see the standard application form that includes the code of conduct that would be signed by applicants to all our commissions. I don't know if that would apply to the air district being slightly separate from the county itself.
And I believe that we've had those comments in the past, and there's been a response. This is kind of a quasi-state slash county board. I'm ready to move forward if the rest is ready to move forward. So let me open it up for public, but thank you for your comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see none in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint Mark Burkdahl as one of the public members and Lowell Grant as a professional engineer member of the Lake County Air Quality Management District Hearing Board for a three-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Pick which one you want. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. So I think the other items will take a little bit longer. So let's go ahead and take a break until 9:45. And two-minute break. Okay, so let's start with item 6.5, 9:45 a.m. Consideration of Presentation on the Draft Lake County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. We have Nicole Flora, who will take the lead, but we also have Dr. Robert Eiler with us online. Not sure if there's anyone else who's here for the... And Vicky Dole as well. Not sure if there's anyone else who's here for the, and Vicky Dole as well. Laura, yours, Nicole.
Thank you, Chairs, Swatier, and members of the board. As mentioned, my name's Nicole Flora. I'm the Executive Director of the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. I'm here today to talk a little bit about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or also referred to as SEDs. I'm going to briefly cover what the SEDs is about, why we have one, and then Dr. Eiler is going to present on some data that we sourced as part of the strategy. And then we'll dive into a little bit about how the SEDs is used in order to move forward with our economic development plans here in Lake County. The SEDs is a five-year economic development plan. It takes into consideration the current economy as well as our unique strengths and the obstacles of our area. It's used to improve the vitality and the resilience while mitigating our obstacles. As noted at the bottom here and in the agenda packet, I believe, as well, the draft SEDs can be found at that website address. Why do we create the SEDs? In short, it's to access more federal funds and also kind of bring together local plans and align them for an overall strategic goal. It does not replace or duplicate other plans. We use the work of other agencies and what they've created in order to form a wide-ranging plan. And who's in charge? You know, who's leading this effort? The Economic Development Corporation was able to access about $80,000 from the federal government. As part of the required process, we have to create a SEDs committee. That committee was seated by a representative from the county as well as both jurisdictions. And then the remaining seats are made up of local industry leaders. The grant funds were used to hire Chabon Concepts, which representative is on the call today, Vicky Dole and Dr. Robert Eiler. We also contracted with Michelle Scully to perform interviews with locals to learn more about the local economy. How is it developed? So I touched on this a little bit before, but there's two major functions of the development. One is public engagement. So we, through a variety of different avenues, met with and got input from hundreds of people in Lake County through interviews, surveys, and presentations, and then also the project website. In addition, Vicky and Dr. Eiler did a lot of research, as well as Michelle Scully, did a lot of research, a lot of investigation into background documents, other organizational plans, and then interviews with business leaders. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Eiler to talk a little bit about the data that is sort of the platform for which the strategy was developed. Dr. Eiler, are you on?
I am, Nicole. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Awesome. Thank you, Board Chair and Supervisors, and I want to thank Nicole for this opportunity and for Chabon as a partner on this project. Go ahead and click forward, please. So what I want to start with in terms of the data is to think about the American economy and the current forecast, at least as of August. So one more click, I'm sorry. So these data represent what the Philadelphia Federal Reserve does every quarter where they ask 40 forecasters what they see going forward for the American economy. And I pulled three variables out of that forecast. First one, which has that shaded column under the word new, is real GDP growth. And we think of it as income after inflation and the percentage change from the previous year as of the last quarter. So that 2.6% in 2024 represents the current forecast of those 40 forecasters at the median forecast that they put forward for the end of this year in terms of the total year's change in Americans' ability to generate income after inflation. And that's a little bit under the long-term trend, but not too bad, given we're still kind of in the very final shadow effect, or shadow effect of COVID. You can see, though, the previous column was last quarter's forecast, which was 2.5. So they become a little bit more optimistic, but that's primarily driven by a drop in inflation that's relatively small in terms of their forecast by the end of the year, which you're going to see in just a second. And if you look forward over the next few years, there really is not much change, except for 2026, they've given it a little bit of a bump. And that's because the supposition is that inflation is going to go down a little faster, and we may actually have what's called a soft landing and not have a second recession. And right now, I'll give away a little bit. We do not have a second recession currently in major forecasts out there. We will see as we creep forward into 2025 what happens. I'll talk about the probability of recession, at least in the current stage, in just a minute. Next click, please. The unemployment rate represents the number, or the percentage of people who are in the labor force that are looking for work but do not have a job. You can see that in that new column versus the previous column just to its left, every single one of those numbers is up a little bit, but those numbers are historically very small. So they feel a lot of warmth in the American labor market, and we do not expect a recession primarily because we don't expect a lot of people to start losing their jobs. Now, it just so happens that in trend over the last, let's say, six months, we have seen a creep-up of that unemployment rate. And it currently is right around or just above in seasonally adjusted, in a seasonally adjusted basis, that 4.1%. It'll be very intriguing in terms of how these forecasts change as we creep forward December and whether or not we see a few more job losses. But generally speaking, the labor market remains relatively warm because there's a lot more job openings out there than people looking for work. The next click is what we call core PCE inflation. Now, I'm not showing you CPI or what's called the Consumer Price Index because, in fact, the Federal Reserve uses this sort of big mouthful price index to determine whether or not they're going to change interest rates. Core PCE inflation is basically if you take everything I buy at home every month and think about how much in percentage terms, the price of that stuff I buy at home changed from one year ago. That's the 2.8 by the end of December. So the difference, though, with classic PC and cores, that I'm going to take food and energy prices out of that bundle of stuff I buy at home because they tend to be more volatile. And I'm watching for that change to move towards 2%. Now, you can see that 2024 is 2.8, then 2.2, then 2.0. Not much change from the previous quarter, but that little click down led to a little bit of a click up in real GDP growth. And they're connected to each other naturally, but the point is, is that the current forecast is that we will see a drip down in inflation. A warning is that even if inflation goes down as we see on this graph or on this table, it's important to recognize that the previous inflation of the last couple of years has a compounding effect, especially on lower-to-middle-income households and on smaller businesses. One more click, please. As I said before, there's no recession in the forecast. The probability is about 15% at the median for most forecasters, but you have to expect a few more job losses are coming. We're just starting to see the end of the consumer driving the American economy, and we're watching to see how interest rates falling might kind of weave us through, again, seeking a soft landing where we don't have a second recession, even though we had interest rates go up and we had inflation moving up simultaneously. Next slide, please. So with all that noise, I wanted to do a couple of things, and thank you. Just stop there, please. So if you think continued growth is going to happen, so let's say you're kind of leaning a little bit more pessimistic versus optimistic. Let's talk about the optimistic first. If we continue to see labor market gains, inflation moves the way it's supposed to. We don't see a big sell-off in equity markets. Interest rates remain stable and predictable, and we see some stasis in global conflict and some stasis in our own geopolitics here in the United States. Growth should happen basically on this forecast. So those forecasts are predicated upon the idea that we're going to see those things happen. If you're more pessimistic, one of the things, or some of the things to watch for the following. Are you seeing more credit delinquencies? Are you seeing more people that are getting late on payments for things like credit cards, auto payments? Hopefully not too much on mortgages, but the mortgage delinquencies after 90 days have started to creep up just a little bit. And consumer savings rates are at their lowest level in, let's say, the last couple of decades minimum. So we've really traded this sort of robust amount of saving for consumption and, in some cases, an inflation bridge. And we're starting to pay for that a little bit in terms of reduced demand. That continued pitch of compounding inflation, I said before, watch for small and middle-income households to get further behind if inflation doesn't come back down. But we got to watch the combination of those credit delinquencies as well. That can lead to some bizarre behavior in some cases, depending on how many households are actually affected. The orders for manufacturing and managers' pessimism or optimism around with coming in manufacturing is a classic leading indicator of the American economy. That indicator right now is suggesting we're going to see jobs either slow down in their growth or start to get, have a few losses. And then the broader idea is that on the more qualitative side, we need the geopolitical issues in both our country and internationally to somewhat simmer down and become a little bit more predictable. And we, in many ways, just have to get past November 5. Next slide, please. What I want to show now is I want to show the, and let's do two more clicks, please. So I want to show the current forecast that's out there from a combination of forecasters. So Caltrans does a forecast every year doing transportation planning. Department of Finance does one for budget. EDD does one for labor markets. And I kind of take all those into consideration and kind of mold them into what I think is more reality. And if you're looking from 2010 on an annual basis forward to 2030, that shaded area is the current forecast period because we don't have actual data beyond year-end 2023 in terms of labor markets. But you can see that the forecast for California, that green line, is rising, and we've basically recovered from the pandemic. So these data are indexed to be at the end of 2017, basically pre-pandemic. The green line crossed that red dotted line, and we saw the growth of jobs in California continue through 2022 and 2023, but that growth is flattening. And the supposition is it will grow at a decreasing rate for 2030, as you can see, that slope starting to fall down and get a little bit more flat. Lake County, Lake County actually broke out of the pandemic more quickly, flattened out a little bit. You can see that flat period right now between 2022 and 2026, and then it's meant to take off again. That, that takeoff is predicated upon a couple of industries getting some momentum between now and 2026. We're going to talk about this in just a second. But for right now, much like, as we're going to see in a minute, other parts of northern rural California, there've been a flattening period after the sort of coming-out party from the pandemic. Go ahead and do three more clicks, Nicole. So this is Humboldt, Mendocino, Sonoma, and Napa. So you can see that Humboldt and Mendocino are a little bit more flat. That's the green and orange lines. Sonoma and Napa are rising a little faster, and Napa County has really been a star. So one of the things to think about when you think about the SEDs is how much will Napa County be a partner or a complement to what happens in Lake County as the economic development aspect of the SEDs are executed? And thinking about it really that they, as a partner, it's better than trying to compete. Let's go through a couple more clicks there. So these data are as of early 2024, and that growth between 2023 and 2030 is basically about 7% growth to about 18,200 people working at local employers. That does not include cannabis or, in the sense that we have still not counting cannabis jobs in our official data. So I'm not trying to prognosticate how they would add that to the mix yet, but hopefully that will come between now and 2030, and we will see that as lines basically all move up parallel, or at least in some way, shapes and forms above their current levels. There's still a lot of mystery around how many people are actually working in that industry. Hopefully that will be solved over time. The second is to think about how much this growth relies on cannabis, construction, and sort of the economic impact of those industries moving around. And how realistic is that change in Lake County after 2026? We go to the next slide. What we're going to do is we're going to break down the forecast by industry clusters to kind of look underneath the surface of the water and think, okay, if that's what's going to happen in Lake County, what industries are going to drive that change, which can also provide more shape and more context for the execution of path within the SEDs? So you can see transportation, logistics, and utilities are rising relatively quickly, as well as health and private education, primarily through health. So those two industries are the big drivers. But construction, manufacturing, just to the left of transportation, logistics, and utilities have relatively decent growth in Lake County. Now, when you click one more click, you're going to see the California analog in percentage terms. And you can see that Lake County right now, at least in the current forecast and my little molding of it in the end, has a little faster manufacturing, has about the same in construction, a little bit less in total, but will kind of follow the state's lead, assuming the state kind of moves forward. And one of the most important aspects to recognize is that without a natural disaster or a major employer leaving the area, small counties or, let's say, small suburban areas tend not to reset outside of a national or state-level recession. So as long as the national and state economies continue to move forward, Lake County can use that momentum based on what the SEDs is going to tell you and also just economic development activity walking parallel and get to a better tomorrow. Do a couple more clicks, please. So these data are, again, from early 2024, same deal. But once again, the farm data there, that negative 5.8 is not including cannabis. So you're starting to see farmers fade a little bit in terms of their hiring. Some of that is technology-based. You can see technology-based looking forward on the other side where we're seeing info and tech jobs falling a little bit. That's a small number, and the percentage looks really big because you're going from a smaller base. But when you start thinking about how things like AI will be put forward into markets like ag, that might be a sign of the beginnings of that. You can see California barely, you can barely even see California. I don't know why they didn't mark this. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mark California in this, but California produces a little bump off the red dotted line. Transportation utilities look strong as well as healthcare. What does that mean for local residents in terms of the type of jobs that are going to be there in Lake County? And this is true really around rural California. If ag jobs fade, what will pick up that slack? And in healthcare, a good thing, and the answer is from what they pay? Yes. From a way of thinking about servicing a local demography versus exporting goods and services. And this is one of the key aspects of what I've done with Chabon over the decades, is we really focus on how to provide economic development planning where you're looking at the outside markets to bring income into the local area and let that outside income swirl around and lift all boats at once. But watching that is a precursor to potential demographic change. Final slide here is on housing. And the current housing forecast looks like this as of July. The August data are about to come out in about two weeks. But if you look on the far right-hand side, unfortunately, the original optimism about northern California and people moving from all over the place, mainly urban areas within California to get a better quality of life and work remotely, has shifted a little bit. Part of this is also cannabis, and this is one of the ways you can kind of unveil the cannabis conundrum a little bit, is that you can see Lake, Trinity, Mendocino, and Humboldt are all kind of fading, as well as Sonoma and Napa in terms of housing prices. Napa is really because that's been just this race to the top, and now they're starting to pop off in terms of what people are willing to pay. The current median home price, just as a quick aside, in Napa as of last month, about $925,000. That's the middle of the distribution in Napa. So just, just keep that in mind. California barely increasing, and really, the good thing is, is that this isn't 10 or 15%. Generally speaking, if we see interest rates fade, just sort of wrap up and complete the circle. If interest rates fade based on inflation's continued fade and the not, the lack of necessity to keep interest rates relatively high, we should see a little bit more demand in housing. We do not expect a large amount of new supply to come on market, but some of that is predicated upon how well our labor market does. So watch for those three angles in terms of the context changing for 2030 as the SEDs rolled out. Thank you so much. And I'll hand it back over to Nicole.
Thank you, Dr. Eiler. At this point, if there's any questions specifically about the data, it might be a good time to bring those up. Otherwise, we'll keep going on the presentation and we can have another question at the end. If that would.
Go ahead and keep going with the presentation. We'll ask questions at the end.
Great. Okay, so before I move forward, I wanted to talk briefly about how the SEDs is used. So the Economic Development Administration is a federal agency that requires a SEDs in order to get EDA funding. Many other state and federal sources also require some sort of economic development report in order to get grant funding. That, that report needs to support the underlying reason for the project that you're requesting funding for. So in this case, this report was developed under the EDA's framework that's required for the SEDs, but it is probably the most strenuous in its requirements and therefore can be used by all the agencies in Lake County in order to seek funding and do the work that's supported by the report. So moving forward, there's sort of two ways in which the SEDs makes sense to be used. First is this overarching understanding of where we want Lake County to go when it comes to economic development. And that part of the report is often used when we're starting off in our planning of, of projects or programs. So this part of the report is kind of like, what are our goals? What are our objectives? What are our target markets, et cetera? Later, we'll talk a little bit more about projects that have already been identified. Maybe some of the planning has been done. Maybe some of the initial work has been done, but the EDA might be an avenue to get funding to actually start the project or help with operations on the project or the program. So first, we're going to talk about the goals. Basically, this is the building blocks of the economy. We're looking to support the development of locations that businesses can use to start or grow their business. We're seeking to help workforce, and we're seeking to really maximize our limited capital and resources here in Lake County. Objectives. This is a lot of information, and I apologize, it's all here in fairly small print. Obviously, the PowerPoint will be available to you, and the report shows all of this in much greater details. But the basics here is economic diversification through development areas, which are listed in the report. This is based on a pretty basic economic development theory in that if you're diversified, if you have a hit in the market in one particular area, you have other. if you have a hit in the market in one particular area, you have other parts of your economy that help keep you buoyant and doing okay. Visitor amenities, you would expect this to be a big concern for our tourism and hospitality and recreation industries. However, we heard this loud and clear from healthcare, from agriculture, from government, basically across the board. Firms that are looking to bring people to our area need accommodations, including additional lodging options and event centers. I'm going to skip over and go to infrastructure and public safety for just a second. The idea behind this one is really we just need to be able to move people, raw materials, value-added materials, and data with confidence and reliability. So broadband, water, sewer, roads, et cetera. And then lastly, the entrepreneurship and small business and the talent development is where you're going to see a lot of Lake EDC's work and collaboration, and that's the idea that I feel really strongly about growing our own, being able to give our local residents the resources that they need to start and build businesses here. And then on the other side of that, having our workforce be skilled and ready for the industries that are able to give them living wage jobs. Target industries. So a lot of this was kind of brought up in Dr. Eiler's presentation. You know what most of these things are. I wanted to point out that the last two listed there are the exporting firms and the local serving businesses are something that the SEDs committee really felt passionate about in that exporting firms grows the local economy. If you export an item, you bring new money, building a larger pie for Lake County. And then local serving businesses is really this idea that when you start a business here or if you live here, you need to be able to do business with other local firms. So things like accountants, bookkeepers, et cetera, those secondary business-to-business So now moving on to the second part of the report that is a little bit more focused on projects that the county and its partners will be looking to implement over this five-year timeframe. So these are projects that we worked with Ben to list details about. I'm not going to go into detail with them, they're your projects, but I wanted you to know that they're called out specifically in order for the hope to be able to access EDA funding in the future. And then the last slide is that we worked closely with the tribes to include their projects as well. So the EDA has a set aside that's often specifically for tribes, but that doesn't make them ineligible to access funding in the general pots as well. Some of the tribes locally have economic plans and staff, and others do not. However, we were as inclusive as we possibly could and created a section that lists those development areas as well in order to help show that collaboration. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and conclude our presentation, and if you guys have questions, myself, Dr. Eiler, and Vicky Dole are all here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you to all who put in the work to get this to where it is. I know I've asked you many, many questions in the past, and I think a lot of the answers was, we need to update the SEDs.
Yes.
So here we are. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Very thorough presentation. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate the depth of all this stuff in here. It was highlighted, we don't have a lot of data points on our state licensed cannabis industry just yet. That said, and I don't think the EDA template would probably look favorably on that, being the feds that they are. That said, we're into our eighth year of the cannabis regulations here, and we do have something of an industry. So although I don't see it in this report, I do have some ideas on some data sources, including Department of Cannabis Control, our local trade group, and what have you. So when we update this puppy and have additional interviews in future years, I do hope to see some minor bow to our growing cannabis industry. It's probably not the hugest number of jobs, but it's not nonexistent either. So I would like to suggest, if I could, some attention to that in future years. But I love everything else I see here. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
I would make, obviously, appreciate this. I think I attended the first one we did these years back, right? The economic development study we did in Kelseyville, you know, early on. So I attended this early on with Dr. Eiler as we moved forward. Appreciate it being updated, but I do have to make a comment of, I'm looking at the SEDs committee members here, I don't see any tribes on here.
Okay.
So tribal health is a consortium.
Yes.
Resto Perdiyo is an employee, not a tribal member. So once again, we've got an updated report, but there are seven tribal nations. I think one of the largest employers, if we do, you know, at least maybe not the largest, but one of the biggest, if you put all seven nations together, both on our government, our casino sides, one of these days, if Lake County can really get it in their mind that we really got to start looking at the opportunities that the tribal governments give. You have four casinos located next to the Bay Area. Beautiful place around a beautiful lake. Why are we still having people driving to Lake Tahoe? You know, it blows me away, you know, and those types of things. I hope we can improve this over the next five years. I see there were some bits and pieces in there, but there's so much diversification going on in the tribal nations here. There's online businesses that are worldwide, global, that are happening with some of the tribes. There are all kinds of things that are happening that people don't see, and I think, you know, if we can really include that, it'd be good as we move on. Obviously, we've got work to do, and like I said, I think there's some confusion sometimes of tribal health and our necessary. Tribal health only exists because of the seven tribal nations. It's under each tribal nation, you know, that's the only reason it exists. You know, so we all did that, you know, we built it. Each tribe put in their funds to do those things, but every tribal nation's working on a million different things. So I just, I want to make that comment. I appreciate all the work being done, but once again, I've got a report where I don't see any tribal leaders or tribal, you know, we all have economic development committees. We run governments just like you guys do here at the county. We just are smaller, and we do it internally, but we do work. We sit on a lot of different committees, so I think we're missing out on a huge opportunity in our economies as we're going after we, you know, we did shutter our businesses just like everyone else during the pandemic, but we also brought back hundreds of employees as soon as we could open those doors safely and bring those things back. So, you know, and, you know, another tribe just signed a compact here locally. I know we just finished ours for another 25 years for Middletown Rancheria. I know other tribes have gotten their secretarial decisions completed, so you've got at least another quarter of a century going there. You had another tribe just signed by the governor, you know, just signed another compact, so there's another potential opportunity and growth there. So anyway, and then I didn't see anything about in your district, Canokta Harbor Resort, which is coming back some, got a lot of work to do and stuff, I think, but great opportunities that brought thousands and thousands of people. And I think from a tourism standpoint, when you look at these things, no business knows their customers better than the casinos. We track them. That's why we have players' cards. That's why we know exactly where they're coming from. Heck, we know their birth dates, we know what they're doing, they know what they like. You know, we do a lot of internal marketing and other things, and, you know, in all of our paperwork, we've got the most beautiful scenic drive into Lake County. You have state parks coming over St. Lena, those types of things. So as we work together and continue to grow, because we've come a long ways, I appreciate that, even I think me having the opportunity to speak today on this is a testament to that. We've got work to do, but we appreciate the work being done. We will use this to go out and get economic development. And I keep saying that the tribes and ourselves, Ben Rickelman just sent something the other day that there may be a collaboration opportunity if the tribes can really step up. I think we can bring a lot of funds in from the federal dollar standpoint into Lake County to help us all move forward. So hopefully, we'll continue those conversations. So please don't take any of my comments as negative. I think we're missing a whole market section. Even Dr. Adler, I didn't hear him talk anything about the tribal nations here in the county. That brings a whole different economy that can even move a little quicker than the cities and the county government, because we internally have those infrastructures to do that. So that's, I appreciate this, and we'll definitely use this and continue growing. So just the only comment, but I didn't see any tribal leaders on that board.
Thank you for your comment. So I know, I think the timing is impeccable. I feel like this should be a document that we keep in mind while we're looking at renewing our general plan and approving the general plan. Are we zoned to support where we feel business growth is going to happen? We don't want to have people come in to rezone so that it can go through that process, which takes a lot of time, just so that we can finally connect to what the future looks like. So I think the timing is impeccable, and it's something we need to keep in mind as we go through the new general plan and area plans and things like that before finally approving. It was interesting, in some of the report, it talked about how there was a decrease in poverty in Lake County. I think the increase in the struggle, and that was kind of alluded to by Dr. Eiler, of middle class and lower class. So it's hard to see that, yes, we've decreased that, but we also know that the struggle of groceries and electricity and everything else is very real, so it's hard to say that's a good thing when the outside forces are unfortunately working against us at that level. There was another interesting part in there that said that we were at a higher level than the state on remote work, like barely higher. I think it was like 14% versus 13%. Do you know what the breakdown of work sectors, the remote workers identify as? Is it tech? Is it government? Is it? Just kind of curious what those sectors were.
I don't know that off the top of my head. Dr. Eiler or Vicky, do you have any comments or?
No, I don't know that off the top of my head either. Thank you for that question. I'm not sure if census tracks that at a sort of granular level in such a way that it would be informative, but I can work with Nicole real quick and see if I can track down something just to kind of, you know, provide some answer or some inkling as to what changes would take place.
I'd agree with you, Rob. I don't think that they track it at that detail. We might be able to make some inferences if we can get the information as far as the, you know, kind of the wage levels of the folks that are working at home. We could kind of make some assumptions.
And I appreciate that, and maybe I'm being naive in thinking that different remote work requires different infrastructure to ensure that we can help support the growth of those remote work sectors. I don't know, maybe everybody needs the same level of broadband access and whatnot, but in my opinion, if I'm just writing stuff versus doing remote video work or things like that, I would suspect that there's a different level of need of infrastructure to ensure that that job is compatible with what we have here, but I could be wrong. But again, I think this is perfect timing to complete this. And this, I know you were just at the city of Clear Lake. Obviously, you're doing your rounds to the jurisdictions to do your presentations. Is this the final version? When is the final version planning to be completed?
We hope to gather the remaining comments this week, and the SEDs committee will approve in their meeting in September.
Okay. And I think one of the big ones that comes up to mind for me is the potential drop in agriculture. We are an agricultural county. I know that the board just recently, maybe not that recently, close to a year ago, helped rejuvenate, rejuvenate, excuse me, the Food Policy Council with the idea of supporting agriculture, more specifically in food production, to ensure sustainability and resiliency during emergencies and just normal every day. Hopefully, that can have an impact to reverse that negative five or negative four percent that it was at, but that is a great concern to me as that really changes potentially the identity of who Lake County is. So while some of those things are projections, that doesn't mean that there can't be policy or there can't be work behind the scenes that helped to change some of those things to find new ways to support those industries and have that growth rather than that decrease. Those are my only comments. Appreciate the level of work, the level of detail, and again, your timing, I think, is impeccable. Vice Chair Randall?
A lot has already been said, so I'm just going to touch on one thing, and that is on either, I don't think it's a challenge, and it's kind of both challenge and an opportunity to get a grasp on short-term rentals. I know that's something that we can do at our level, and I know that the tax collector's working on it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention and know that we understand that that's a challenge right now, and it's happening in many other rural counties too. So just wanted to give that insight.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
One other thing, a unique business has been brought recently to Lake County too, is the glamping industry part of that too, to look at that as we're going forward. I think Six Sigma's got a great product out there that they brought to Lake County. I think that fits right in as in that growth opportunity. You know, we've always thought about traditional growth in hotel rooms and that type of space, but I really think, you know, I know we talk recreation, I know we talk lodging and everything, but I think that's a unique opportunity to keep growing. It helps with the bike ride, you know, the mountain biking, everything that we're doing. I think there's some unique properties around the county. We're talking about zoning to help those types of expansions, and I think other people are thinking in that direction, so I think it really ties into everything too. I don't know where it fits into the report, but I think that's a missing part too as we're going forward, because it's less on the environment, you know, as the construction goes, gives you different opportunities as you're moving forward there. And it kind of ties into that ecotourism, the work that Terra's doing for restoration, all the stuff the Risk Reduction Authority's doing, the prescribed burn things and everything. I just saw a report today, UC Davis agreeing that small controlled fires are way better, and I think that economy that isn't in here, because we're going to have folks that really don't need a lot of education. You go in there, you're just a hard worker, you can pick up, you know, a tool to do the work out there, a chainsaw, other things, another economy position that we've positioned ourselves for in Lake County to grow that workforce and economic development stuff. So the hard work being done by everybody.
Supervisor Price.
One of the things that I've been talking with Ben a lot about over the last year is the need for, or the potential growth for satellite offices, because we have so many people that are commuting or working remotely, but their parent company might recognize that they have several employees that live in county in an area, and so how can we develop some newer office spaces that can serve for those satellite offices? I do have someone who has an engineering firm in Napa, and he lives here, and it has been the long-range plan to develop a satellite office here, and now they have. So they bought their building, but now they have to go through a lot of renovations. So if there's some sort of easy way to have these little hub office spaces in our little downtowns, I think that will only help. You know, it's hard when you work remotely, and then you have to make a two-hour commute or a three-hour commute, and so having that synergy right in our little downtown area, feeding our little shops and restaurants, is something that Ben and I have been talking about for a long time, one of my priorities.
Thank you.
One more thing too, I was reading through and looking in the report, is the facade for each one of the communities coming together to really put that together as you're coming over the mountain, Mount St. Lena, you know, Middletown, you go right through it, you know, getting the buildings all painted up, nice, the curb walks, sidewalks that are going to be coming in the next few years to tie everything together, the facade look. I know there's conversations in each one of our districts going on, but continue, I love to see that that's in there, because those grant opportunities, I think, will really, really drive the business, the small business independent owners to help get those things going and to give that really good look that, you know, as you're driving through town of what our communities are and who we are. So I think that's, I really liked that little section there on those things, because the conversations are happening, we just got to find a way, and maybe this is the opportunity to do that. So thank you guys for the work on that.
And I do know that Mr. Rickelman was working on a facade grant or a facade project. Looks like he might be coming up to talk about it.
Good morning, Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. A few comments regarding the facades, so with the upcoming state CDBG. So with the upcoming state CDBG Economic Development Round, that's going to be part of our application. I think Jeff is actually going to speak to that in a little bit. So that is in the pipeline. We anticipate that launching somewhat soon. And also just say with the EDA funding, it's a, I would say a moderate appropriation each year with the public infrastructure and economic adjustment assistance. That being said, you know, there might be next year, year after a reconciliation bill, which happened with ARPA and CARES, where there is a large amount of money coming to EDA all of a sudden and you have a fairly quick turnaround. So if you have a well-prepared comprehensive economic development strategy, that will really help get that money.
Thank you very much. So there was one other item I wanted to bring up, the education projections and status. So if I remember correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're seeing an increase in high school graduate rates, but a decrease in college graduation rates, bachelors, and I don't know if it was AA degrees, but like I said, professional degrees, which I'm thinking is more elevated than that, than bachelors. It talked a lot about, not a lot, but it discussed Woodland, it discussed Mendo College, just the, the potential of those expansions and additions. I think one of them was like student housing, another one was expansion of programs and maybe more buildings for Mendocino College. But there was not really, in my opinion, a mention about dual enrollment focus at the high school level where we can have high school graduates come out with an AA degree who are ready to fill in some of the positions that still require an AA degree in order to get started. I know that I'm speaking with Woodland Community College. In the past, we had a great pathway, a pipeline for human and health services degrees where a lot of our up-and-coming directors and manager positions currently at behavioral health and social services, those folks went through those programs. And so trying to resurrect what used to be because things have changed. But if we can get more of those opportunities at our high school levels and really connect that so that it's workforce development, that can be from trade school stuff, the, what do they call it? The CTE, Career Technical Education, as well as the dual enrollment towards degrees. Simultaneously, those students will be better prepared to make money as soon as they're 18 and start their careers rather than that starting point of adulthood that is so 1950s, 1970s way of doing things. So that's one way to help and I didn't see that really identified as a potential resource or opportunity to really help out with the workforce development in the, in the package that I read.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier. Since we published this draft, there has been additional data that has come to the service through Mendocino College. I have not yet received the data from Woodland. But we are looking at including some of that dual enrollment data. And it's, it, from the initial glance at it, it does break down where the student lives in relative, like what high school they're connected to, and then if they're connected to the college at the Lake Center or online or the UCAIA Center. So there's a good amount of data there and so we're trying to flesh out what it means and, and how we can include it in the report. So I apologize it's not in this draft, but it is on its way to being added. I don't know that we're going to have Woodland's data in time, but I know that there is additional push to get more information and get that going in that area as well.
And I know they just had quite the change in leadership from top to bottom, president all the way down to the dean of the campus locally. So maybe that could be part of the reason that it's been difficult to get that data, but hopefully can get it because I think it's an important aspect of working towards the future development of our youth to be prepared for careers.
And it doesn't, you know, not having the data included as an appendix doesn't mean that the call to action for needing to work on that can't be included. It just means we don't have it yet. So we can still include that as part of our overarching goals and objectives.
Thank you very much. And without any further pens up, let's open it up for public comment. I'm going to start in the Zoom room with a hand, Betsy Khan.
Good morning, Chair Sabatier, and thank you, Board, for this opportunity to speak to you. As a member of the public, my name is Betsy Khan. First, I would like to say that I do not find this particular plan to be anything but mostly reiterative of all the previous plans. I don't find anything strikingly novel or innovative. It's very repetitive of all the things that we've heard in the last previous plans. I, I'm very concerned that the comments provided by the supervisors, Supervisor Pyska, Supervisor Simon, Supervisor Green, Supervisor Sabatier, they, they should be in this plan, not, you know, something, because these are crucial elements that apparently aren't in this plan. For example, but not exclusively the tribal industries and economic contributions. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see this plan move forward without incorporating all of that input. The Food Security Council, locally grown foods, you know, the, the concept that we're going to somehow create exportable products, where I don't know how many times we've been through proposals for developing products that can be exported and then realizing, oh my God, it costs too much to ship things. And we know what that's about. In terms of the colleges, how many times have we had this conversation about the high schools and the co-enrollment in high school programs that lead to college education? You know, healthcare, law enforcement, environmental work that has to be done here. We have those arenas of, of education and opportunities. They're not particularly glamorous and so they're not part of an economic development plan. And then we have housing and short-term occupation or short-term rentals and facade improvements. Facade improvements, we started those in the year 2000 and we still have this, this idea that we're going to be able to, you know, put a pretty face on a building and we have all these old buildings that are not really adequate to the kind of services that you want to bring in, such as the office buildings, the remote site buildings and so forth. Well, we have to find a way to develop those, those areas and industries within, within the county so that we have the workforce housing, we have the student housing, we have affordable housing and we can bring in people and we have to have health and safety. And especially we need to address the, the neglect of the environment. We just had a two-day scientific symposium on the entire.
Please finish your comment.
Sorry, I'll, I'll wrap up. We had a scientific symposium that identified many, many ways in which we could be bringing people in and I didn't hear anything about science as a source of economy here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I will speak on a couple of things. Certain things, yes, have been tried and were part of previous strategic plans. That doesn't mean you have to throw it out and not go with a, a new strategy. For example, working with the colleges and the high schools, that has evolved. It used to be ROPS and that didn't work very well. Now they turned it into dual enrollment where you are treated more like a college student. ROPS was basically a pass fail. That's, that's how it worked. You did not get an actual grade if you had above a certain grade level, but you didn't receive a degree. You just showed that you passed a class. Now you are able to get degrees. I was actually part of the college where we really enhanced dual enrollment, created the middle college. And that first cohort, we had three or four students that got an AA degree just coming out of that cohort and it continues to grow. Certain things take time and I don't think we should give up on good ideas just because it hasn't necessarily worked in the past. We can evolve and do better in order to continue to do the work that makes sense to continue being focused on. It doesn't mean that this is perfect, but I think that some of the things that you mentioned, for example, I don't think economic development strategy is, is more about the sectors of the industry rather than, for example, fix your lake and you'll do better. The lake is, is obviously going to help tourism, but it doesn't build industries necessarily. And I could be mistaken and you can disagree, but that, that's just, I think this is very well-focused. And I think we need to keep trying and things, things still make sense. Anyways, that's my response to that. I see no further hands up. I don't see anybody getting up in the board chambers and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green.
To the speaker's comments, and obviously this is kind of a living document of sorts. We use that phrase for a lot of things, but I wonder, Ms. Flora, if you could, it appears this is a draft document. It looks like CETS is supposed to convene tomorrow to vote on submission of the strategy. So can you just talk a little bit about process and how living, this particular living document is if you're on a deadline to get it forwarded to EDA, et cetera? So because, I think it's fair. You do want to incorporate comments. That's why we have a draft document. That's why you have public meetings, not just here, but it looks like both City of Clear Lake and City of Lakeport. So you can explain a little bit about the process and how you will be able to incorporate the comments you receive from those various agencies.
Yes. So we opened this document with a press release last month. The intention was to close comments after today's presentation and the presentation to Lakeport this evening. However, we are going to keep comments open because these public meetings are happening through the end of this week. We are not going to be voting tomorrow at the SEDS meeting to approve this particular draft. The SEDS committee will meet in September, the third Wednesday. I can't remember the date of that meeting off the top of my head, but during that meeting, the comments will have been incorporated and that finalized version will be approved by the committee. After that, we do have to submit the approved copy to EDA for approval and make sure that all of the required parts of the process were complete. And then once they approve it, then it's finalized for five years. The idea theoretically is after the conclusion of the fourth year, you start drafting the next version. What happened this time was there was a lapse. However, that's the intention is to, is to finalize it and have it for five years and then at the completion of that five years, we'll have a new one to replace it.
And then a final comment. I do appreciate the fact that you did reach out to the tribes in order to get the concepts of what projects they are working on. I do agree with my colleague of looking to diversify the committee and seeing if you can invite tribal leaders from those tribes to be a part of the committee to ensure that we are seeing this from every perspective. They're an important jurisdiction within Lake County and great partners to help us reach our goals economically and for other purposes as well. Just wanted to support that statement and leave you with that. And no further comments. This is just a presentation only, no motion or action needed. Thank you very much for your presentation and the work behind that and to your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 6.6, our 10:15 a.m. item, public hearing, consideration of closing of the CDBG Economic Development Micro Enterprise. There seems to be a team of folks here, please come on up. Seems like Ms. Moreno is taking the lead on this.
Yeah, why not?
Good morning.
Good morning. Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administrative Officer for Finance and Budget. With me today is the county's CDBG consultants, Jeff Lucas and Andy Lucas with CDS. We are in front of your board today requesting approval to close out the CDBG Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Grant 20-CDBG-12082. On July 14th of 2020, your board adopted a resolution authorizing the county to apply for the CDBG Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Grant in the amount of $250,000. In February of 2021, we received the award letter from HCD for the total award amount of $250,000. With the implementation of the Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Program, the county received 105 inquiries, 54 of which completed the state micro enterprise self-certification form. Thirty-seven applicants were deemed eligible and received assistance with business planning, financial planning, business forecasting, credit and marketing assistance. Of the eligible applicants, 13 were existing businesses with 24 being startup businesses. All individuals who were assisted were from the low to moderate income group with the vast majority as sole proprietors and self-employed. During the 18-month implementation period, over 2,000 hours were spent with individuals on business-related technical assistance. The program assisted in capital infusion to participating businesses in the aggregate amount of over $100,000. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anything else from the Lucas team?
Thank you. No, that was a fine summary. Thank you very much. And just on the tails of the SEDS conversation, I think this is one of the tools in the county's toolbox to help with the local talent, so to speak, and training them up and helping them to prepare to access capital and put together a business that's going to be able to maneuver through some of the trials and tribulations that we're going to have coming up as related to the SEDS. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further? All right. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just didn't see the total amount of the, of what we had. What was the, the amount of the original grant?
$250,000.
All right, thank you.
So I did have a, a question and I appreciate that you provided that there was technical assistance or the program provided assistance to 13 existing businesses and 24 startup businesses. That's great. I'm very much more interested in how are those businesses doing? How many of those startups are still there? How many of those existing businesses either flatlined because there's a struggle and maybe flatlining is actually a positive or actually had growth? Because it's great if we can touch 54 or, sorry, 37 businesses, but if those 37 businesses either closed their doors or had to lay off employees, then I'm not, I, it doesn't help me to understand the overall outcomes of the program. Would you happen to have any of those details or can those details be provided at a later time?
Yeah, the details can be provided at a, at a later time and the vast majority of these folks were sole proprietors. They either have a business concept or an idea, an idea for how to make a great pizza, but they don't have much of business acumen. A lot of folks that we talked to or that we worked with through the qualifications, they are hairdressers, they are nail technicians, they are a lot of sole proprietor type businesses. So they're providing those personal services. So the tracking of those types of businesses is difficult, but we do maintain contact. The individuals, once they are deemed eligible through the eligibility criteria, the income, they're eligible for services for three years. So as far as the, the program goes, if, if, if the county wishes to, you know, pursue the micro enterprise, which, which is what, what the county has chosen to do, those folks can come back and we have relationships with them through the program. So, so the idea is to either help them continue on in that aspect or pivot. Some of those folks have, you know, gone to nail tech school from hairdressing school as an example. So to answer your question, we, we do have relationships with those people, but it is difficult to track those types of businesses.
Yeah, and I think it's difficult, even if it's larger businesses as well. But it's still something I'm, I'm always interested in as to knowing, how, how did this help rather than we offered help? And then are you seeing, especially for the startup businesses, are you seeing more traditional type of work or are you seeing more gig economy type of work being looked into? Kind of like going to where your customers are? Like I even see food trucks as part of the gig economy where you're going to your customers rather than having your brick and mortar store expecting customers to come find you. Are you seeing a change in the type of workforce or workplace that's being asked to get some help?
Yeah, yes. The folks that we worked with traditionally have been, you know, kind of a brick and mortar. So again, the instance of the, the beautician or the. So again, the instance of the beautician or the hairdresser. Now, they're working to provide a little bit more mobile services. We had estheticians, sort of the same type of thing, where they work to go to the client as opposed to the client coming to them. And it helps with the overhead costs of a, of a brick and mortar facility. So there is a bit of that shift towards a more mobile business concept, but it's, it's slow.
Yeah. Got to put your name out there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'm going to open it, open it up for public comment. I see no movement in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. And very weird report, but it's what the report requests. So, looking for motion.
Move to approve the closing of the CDVG Economic Development Micro Enterprise Grant.
We have a motion in a slow second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to our 10:20 item, public hearing, consideration of closing of the CDVG Lake County Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund. Ms. Moreno?
Thank you. So we are in front of your board today requesting approval to close out the CDVG Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund 20-CDVG-CV-1-00106. On August 25th of 2020, your board adopted the resolution authorizing the county to apply for the CDVG Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund in the amount of $202,859. In March of 2021, we received the award letter from HCD for a total award amount of $202,859. The funding was to support local for-profit businesses recovering from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Two loans were approved by the loan committee administered by CDS. Upper Lake Grocery received funds in the amount of $175,000 and allowed them to retain eight jobs. The second was for AT Wonzar Grading and Excavating, who received funds in the amount of $210,000, of which $2,859 came from the first round and the balance came from the CV-2-3 grant. And that allowed them to retain six jobs.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I did have a curiosity question, very similar to my last one. Obviously, there was a lot of help that was needed during COVID. It was quite tumultuous during that time for businesses. Did those jobs continue to be held after the fact that these funds were utilized? Or was it a temporary delay of losing those jobs?
Those jobs are still in place and the wages are above the average wage overall. And so, both those businesses, it's hard to say they would not be in business, but without this help, they probably would not still be in business here. And we probably would not have those jobs because there wasn't any other source of funds except for the program that the county set up to assist them to maintain. And the funds primarily went for working capital to cover the costs of expenses that were static while income went way down. So this program really had a good impact. And in a few months, we'll be back and talk a little bit more about the larger grant, the CB2 and 3 CDVG funds and that particular program. Also, wanted to address a couple of things on the, back on the other grant that we just closed out.
With that, we've already closed that item.
I'm going to sneak this in.
Make it quick.
I'll make it quick. So we work with quite a few businesses that had been in business and helped them also stay in business during this period of time. These two grants kind of overlap time-wise. So I, I think there was, I just want to talk about the importance of that technical assistance and helping people deal with new problems as they arise, as well as capital access. Those two together, the assistance that we can provide through the county's program, I think are impactful and do make a difference. And those two tie together. Also, if, I'll stop now.
Mr. Chair, Crandall?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that, of course, Highway Grocery, you know, that's a big deal over there in Upper Lake. But just along Highway 20, whether it be this or the others, but I know with regard to the revolving loan and whatnot, there were folks that, you know, would reach out to me about necessary repairs or something, you know, anything. And just wanted to highlight how appreciative it was, regardless of the help that they felt that you would reach out to them as soon as possible. And they had that dialogue as well, even on, sorry again, I'm going to throw it in the last one too. It was the same thing. Every time that I gave them the number to you all, it was, it was acted on. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Pardon, pardon my ignorance of this, but we're, the agenda item is to close out the loan fund. So I guess that kind of perked my ears up because it begs the question of whether the loans have been repaid. And, and the question is to whom it would go? Because if we're here to close out the loan fund, I guess we would not be the payee of any repayments of the loan. So it's kind of a one-way loan thing, the way I'm reading it here. So if we're to close out the loan fund, I'm assuming all the funds have been dispersed. And to the extent any repayment is expected, it would not be to the loan fund itself. Can you clarify how a loan fund works and why we're closing it out absent any evidence of repayment? Are we, are we expecting repayment? Should the loan fund go away? Or just how is this puppy set up?
So this action today is to close out the grant that originally funded this particular portion of our overall loan fund. And so, it's a requirement of the grant, you know, you open it, you have a standard agreement, you implement it, and then when you've exhausted the funds at a certain period of time, we have to close it out. That's part of this process. That's a little bit separate from the loan fund itself. These folks are continuing to repay the debt that they incurred with the county. And that money is coming back into the county's loan fund. There are other grants that have funded that particular revolving loan fund. So those funds are continuing to come in from these two, as well as other, excuse me, other businesses. And so, the fund itself still exists. We're just closing out this, this grant. So that money keeps coming in during the term, say it's five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever the term of the loan to the business was. And that money comes back into the county to reuse for other CDVG eligible activities like additional loan interest loans or technical assistance programs.
So just, it may be semantics, but the agenda item might have been titled, "We're closing out the grant. We're not closing out the actual loan fund." And so, the recommended action that includes the word "grant" would be accurate if we made such a motion?
Because it's called the loan fund, grant, but we're not closing out the loan.
Exactly.
All right. So I just want to highlight, from my own education, that the subject line of the agenda and the recommended action have one little word of difference and we're here today to discuss closing out the grant. Thank you for that clarification.
If there's nothing further, I believe I've opened it up for the public. Maybe not. Let me just do that again. I'm getting a no. And so, anyone wish to speak on this item? Please raise your hand or come up to the mic. And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. And thank you very much for that explanation. That gives me a good, a good idea of the success of the program. And so, thank you very much. Looking for action.
Move to approve the closing of the CDVG Lake County Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund Grant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right. We're going to take a quick break. We will reconvene at 11:10 and we will continue on our agenda. Mr. Chair? Just for clarification, is it? It was a loan grant fund. Eleven ten. Eleven ten, it was eleven ten. I thought I heard 10-10, but it was. But it's good to have the backup to check, just in case. I could say anything and that's the problem. Say what?
All right, welcome back. We will continue where we left off. We are now on item 7.3. If our behavioral health team can come up, I'll go ahead and read the item. Consideration of resolution authorizing the behavioral health director to sign the standard agreement and contractor certification clause between the County of Lake and the California Department of Healthcare Services for provision of substance use disorder treatment organized delivery system services under the 1115 Medicaid demonstration waiver. Director Jones, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this morning. I am joined by my colleague, Program Manager of Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services, Ms. Amber Westfall. And we are beyond thrilled to finally bring forward this resolution for the standard agreement of entrance into the DMC, the Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery System. We've actually already gone live, which is how it often goes, but we went live July 1st. It was a Herculean effort, mostly commissioned by Amber Westfall. She really put all of the work into it. Of course, we still have a long ways to go. This is the first leg of a multi-year journey. We do not presently have all levels of care needed for our beneficiary as required by the ODS, the DMC ODS in our county, so we're going to work diligently over the next year to hopefully bring those services within our county borders ideally. But if, you know, we also use out-of-network providers. So again, really just a chance to celebrate the work particularly of Amber in our department in bringing forward a much expanded benefit package for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services.
Thank you very much. Ms. Westfall, would you like to add anything to that?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I have nothing to add. I think Elise summarized everything quite well.
No.
She's basically right on the microphone.
That's being tempered.
There you go.
Did I light it up?
Aha.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. I have nothing to add. Elise summarized the purpose of the contract quite well. What I can say is there are, in terms of enhanced Medi-Cal benefits to Lake County residents, there are services that are considered mandatory and others that are considered optional. And when Director Jones speaks of we are lacking two mandatory benefits, she is referring specifically to youth residential services and withdrawal management services, but we are working diligently to expand those services and expand our network of care.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering if, just briefly, if you can explain the 65% pass-through. How does that work? And yeah, if you can just provide an explanation for that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to just give a high-level overview of the finances associated with DMC ODS. Trying to figure out where to start, which is, it's a long story. So, as you're aware, specialty mental health services are, we pay for beds for certain levels of care. Actually, we have a contract before here coming up to talk about that, right? And those bed placements. And not all bed placements are funded out of Medi-Cal. We use other funding sources. And then the bulk of it is fee-for-service. And services are billed by provider type. So doctors bill a certain rate, nurse practitioners bill a certain rate, licensed practitioners of the healing arts and so on all have a rate regardless of the type of service, but they have a menu of services that any one of those positions may offer. So similarly, Drug Medi-Cal and the Organized Delivery System has a model whereby we pay for beds. However, we do have a reimbursement rate, a bundled reimbursement rate from Medi-Cal. Unfortunately, in full transparency, the Medi-Cal reimbursement rate does not cover the day bed rate or the cost of doing business. That's a state issue that's being actually lifted up. We had the privilege and opportunity of attending a statewide conference yesterday, last week about this, and this was globally reflected as an issue. Even the President of ACM recognizes that the rate of reimbursement for those bed days is not enough to meet demand. So I'm pretty confident that that issue is going to resolve. However, where we make up for it and do well is on our fee-for-service Medi-Cal rates, which is again by provider type. So any type of provider may provide a Drug Medi-Cal service depending on their level of care. We provide levels 1.0, which is outpatient, and we are also certified for intensive outpatient services at our own clinics. So we're a provider that does services in-house. And then we do contract out all other kinds of levels of care that are not outpatient. We also contract out intensive outpatient with a couple of contracted providers. And the 65% pass-through only applies to our fee-for-service rates. So on our fee-for-service, there's a table of rates that we have, and we just very cleanly pass through 65% of that, which leaves a significant amount of patient revenue generation for us even with contracted providers, and also helps to offset those other costs that aren't as well-covered by Medi-Cal. That seems to be working pretty well in our specialty mental health care system, and so I anticipate it will work similarly well in the fee-for-service realm in Drug Medi-Cal.
And just for further questions, so for the level of care that is fee-for-service, at this point, they don't have to go through behavioral health in order to access those services, but yet behavioral health is still dealing with the entitlements and the billing, and then you have to pass through back to those agencies that are providing the service.
Yes, that's correct. And so of course, it's our intention and my understanding at this moment in time that we are contracted with all of the entities or in negotiations, like we're working closely with them. So we're not looking at seeing surprise bills from contractors of whom we were not previously aware, although we are actively recruiting actually providers of certain services that we don't presently have in the county as required for network adequacy standards.
But this, this overall ODS model expands the ability of patients, clients, whatever the title is, to go directly to those services rather than having to go directly through behavioral health.
Would you like to talk about how kind of that works, the open door?
Sure. So in the DMC ODS model, we do practice a no-wrong-door approach. So any Lake County Medi-Cal beneficiary can access enhanced SUD services directly with providers. The caveat is that those providers are required to be DMC-certified through DHCS and contracted with our department because we are the pass-through. So individuals can go to any provider in our network. They can also call. We have a 24-hour, seven days a week, member-county member-access line. I cannot recite that number for you at this moment, but you-
She answers it.
I do. I do answer the line. I am on call. So, and then they could also come to our county department. So there are many points of access through a no-wrong-door approach, and no longer do any Medi-Cal beneficiaries have to filter through our department, and they can access services directly.
Thank you very much. I know that Vice Chair Crandall had invited me to be a part of a conversation a long time ago when we made attempts to move towards this type of model, which we weren't able to do until this year, but this was the type of expansion that I thought was exciting for people to not have to go and play ping-pong and try to figure out where am I supposed to go to get started. Now it really opens up the accessibility of these services. So appreciate you answering those questions. I wanted to make sure the public was aware and heard of the differences that would be coming up because I think it's really important, and I think this is great. So thank you for bringing this to us. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just fingers crossed, is this going to hopefully stabilize some of our in-county providers existing, but also perhaps stimulate interest in additional location of services within the county? Maybe, maybe I'm just being too wishful, but it's great to have this.
The answer is yes.
Okay. I'll shorten my question and say thank you.
That is absolutely the hope and desire, that this will absolutely excite those that have been thinking of providing those types of services, trying to make the system a little easier to maneuver through. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no movement in the chamber. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Or motion. It says motion, so I was just like-
The resolution may be offered.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
You're off the hook if you want.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item 7.5 and finish up with our behavioral health items. Consideration of Amendment Number Two to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount of $3,720,000 for fiscal years 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. Director Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Your board may recall that this had been presented in a previous agenda and was not approved appropriately, I believe so, because there were concerns about what the amendment was asking, which was an increase above what had been previously negotiated, which is a fact. There are, within the agenda packet on Granicus, several items. One is an analysis of the actual impact this would have fiscally, the rate increase on our current utilization, so it amounts to about an $80,000 increase estimate, because some facilities went down in their costs, some went up. Overall, it was a net increase of above, again, that 3.5%. It is very tricky in this space. You know, I'm very mindful of runaway costs across the board. Things are getting more expensive, and it's important to remember that these facilities are not only providing behavioral health services, but they're housing and feeding all of these individuals, and so the costs of that has not gone down. It's also true that the workforce remains incredibly competitive. You think about the fact that in a fee-for-service bundle, our doctors are able to draw down, were able to draw down a lot of revenue for those services, and so medical services in particular, finding registered nurses and other providers to provide these services is just gotten a lot more expensive. And of course, in the shadow or the looming, I don't want to say threat, of SB 525, which is the minimum wage for healthcare, which standardizes the minimum wage in all healthcare facilities to $25 an hour, those are going to continue to go up. And so Crestwood, trying to be a competitive business, trying to staff and meet their needs, definitely has seen an increase in their costs, and so they humbly submit, and I'm here to affirm that it's not ideal, and yet it feels relatively reasonable.
Thank you for your presentation. Any comments or questions regarding this item? So just want to say that I appreciate Director Jones being available to discuss this item. I had some grave concerns in how we are being, maybe not treated as the right word, but to see such a change on a three-year contract, I understand that you're moving towards a single-year contract, just feels, what's the purpose of signing a long-term contract if it could just change and we have no choice whatsoever? I think some of the reasons provided to us as for the why there's a rate increase is faulty. There is no state mandate to increase at this moment. It might be postponed all the way to January 1st. If they had already given their clinicians or nursing staff a raise, then just tell us they already got a raise, but don't use the state as a reason why we should be paying more when the state has not put that into effect. Right now, it's on hold until October 15th. If by October 15th, they don't see a 3% revenue increase compared to what they are projecting, then it will be held back until January, which means six months of this would not be impacted if that was the case. And then we had an agreement of no more than 3.5% increase originally, and now at the very bottom of these rates, it says that they hold the right to increase it by 10%. I'm still upset about it. I'm not happy with it. But I'm going to go back to Director Jones. I appreciate the conversation. There is a need, obviously, between a rock and a hard place here, between being upset and between providing a service that is needed for the community members that need this type of service, but this is not sustainable. I just, I know you brought up last time that there's no more limits on what we can spend as a county on these things, and that scares me. What does that mean? I mean, I don't know. We've got to provide the services, but sustainability is also a part of anything that we do. So today, I'll be saying yes, I just needed to express my frustration with this contract because I'd like to have something a little bit more binding than what this is because this was just change it, sign it, you don't have a choice, and I don't like that, so I had to express that. If there's nothing further from the board, open up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands up in Zoom and no one moving in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Appreciate the chair's comments and diligence on this, and I certainly agree with those concerns. I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount of $3,720,000 for fiscal years 20, 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Move on to item 7.6. Consideration of Agreement Between County of Lake and Environmental Alternatives Incorporated DBA/EA Family Services for Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount of $250,000 for Fiscal Year 24, 25. Director Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your board has previously seen contracts of this type come before you. It is a result of recent legislation that was passed that requires us to contract with short-term residential treatment facilities for the placement of foster youth, and now the county where the child was removed, the county of origin, must maintain the fiscal responsibility for those children. The law had previously stated that when you transfer a child out of county, that county that receives them holds it. They've gone back on that, which is fine. So these are fee-for-services, which is our favorite kind of- So these are fee-for-services, which is our favorite kind of contract in behavioral health. It is not a bed day rate. They provide services in addition, fever services in addition to the milieu. And child welfare is responsible for payment of the actual bed.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this? And I apologize, I didn't email you on this, just a question that came to mind. I know that COVID really impacted behaviors in our school settings. These are youth from schools. That's where most of the, if not all of the referrals are coming from, is through LCOE or the school system. Are we seeing an increase or a decrease or stagnant?
I believe we're seeing an increase across all levels of care, actually.
That would have been my presumption as well, so thank you very much for that. That's unfortunate. Supervisor Green?
This is only for foster kiddos, then?
That's correct.
And STRTP services?
Well, no, I pardon me. It's only for systems-involved youth. So it's also true that youth who become a ward of the court either through the foster care system or through juvenile probation, enter into that group of kids.
Because you mentioned CWOS would be on the hook, certainly.
Or probation, it depends on where the kiddo came from.
Whether it's a 600 or a 300. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question. Let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber, bringing it back for action.
Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Environmental Alternatives, Inc., DBA/EA Family Services for Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount of $250,000 for Fiscal Year 20, 24, 25, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our probation item, 7.4. Consideration of A, resolution amending the motion by the board approving the recommended budget of fiscal year 24, 25 by adjusting revenues and appropriations in Budget Unit 2302 for probation. B, presentation of housing project plan with Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. And C, approval of memorandum of understanding and funding agreement between County of Lake and Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, RCHDC, and authorize the chair to sign. And probation chief, Mont France.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us today. I have with me Dan McIntyre from the Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. Our first item of, it's a three-part request today. Our first item is requesting a resolution to, well, let me start from the beginning. The Community Corrections Partnership in October, at our October meeting authorized probation to move forward with developing a housing for justice-involved individuals to deal with our large amount of our population that are homeless. We see about a 30% amount of the people we deal with that are identified in some form of homelessness. And so at the CCP meeting, they allocated $5 million for this expense. That out amount has not been added to the probation department budget because we were still determining if the project was feasible and what type of project we would do. So we did a request for proposal in the spring of this year, and now we're ready to move forward. So we're asking for a resolution where the $5 million would go from the CCP fund into the probation budget as a revenue and an appropriation. So that's the first request.
Can you bring up the PowerPoint, please?
I have a quick question, Wendy.
Sure.
Is that 30% homeless? Are they getting picked up on the pick count?
We're doing everything we can to make sure they are. I don't think the numbers quite show that in our last pick count numbers, but our probation staff highly participate in the pick count and do what we can to get the accurate count.
In fact, I would say you're a great contributor to the COC as a whole, so appreciate always having you there.
Thank you. It's too much color in it. There we go. Okay, so now we want to talk about the housing project that was chosen from the RFP. Where's it going? There we go. Okay, so as I said, more than 30% of the probation individuals we interact with are identifying in some way with homelessness. And we did the RFP for the project in January where three vendors came forward with proposals on justice-involved housing. Our request was that we house at least 20 individuals for a 12 to 18-month period while we got them into our services, community services, and found permanent housing for them. And at that RFP process, RCHDC was chosen.
So my name is Dan McIntyre. I'm the chief operations officer for RCHDC, so I'm gonna just tell you briefly about our organization and what we do. We're a nonprofit housing development and property management company. We were founded in 1975 as a spinoff of NCO in Mendocino County. We, our mission is to provide affordable and decent housing to individuals of low to moderate income. So we do that from Lake Mendocino all the way up to the Oregon border. We provide and develop special needs housing and probation housing, such as we're proposing here. We've partnered with numerous different county agencies over the years, from Lake Mendo, Del Norte, Humboldt, Tahima, to do this type of housing. We did a lot of no-place-like-home housing. We're currently finishing the housing development in Nice currently, right now. We've also done and developed 66 affordable, well, self-help-built houses in Lake County over the years, some in Upper Lake and some in South County. And we continue to develop and we're working with Wendy on this proposal.
Okay, so this project is 40 units with 20 units that'll be set aside for justice-involved individuals. Our $5 million will be added to funds that RCHDC acquires through housing tax credits and the local, I'm sorry, there's a new fund being developed, which they're also proposing. It's the Local Rural Housing Trust Fund, thank you. The proposed timeline would be over the next few months, we would look at different parcels and come up with a idea of where it's going to be built. And the funding would be acquired once that parcel has been identified and construction would start in around November of 2026. So we would have not only a place for individuals to live, but there'd be case management ability onsite, rooms for meetings, collaboration, and we would be onsite all the time and have areas to have confidential meetings. There'd be a servants coordinator and a property manager onsite. So what we're looking for now is approval of our contract. Then we will go on and locate the sites. We have some identified, but we want to have community stakeholders have a say in what we're looking at. And then we will continue on with the construction process. That is our presentation on it.
All right. Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Crandall?
Thank you for your last statement. You said exactly what I was gonna ask, and that is for having community input. There's been a couple, and you mentioned the Nice project where there was a lot of dissension and outrage about that. There also was another potential youth project in my district that was just a complete outrage as well. So wherever it's at, make sure if there's a town hall there or the community, have those discussions or if it comes here, then we talk about those. They have the opportunity to give some input as well. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I agree. Probably there will be pushback, so just to pre-roll some anticipation, we need this type of housing, you know, and we have justice-involved individuals, especially those with certain offenses that require that heightened level of supervision, if you will. What are we supposed to do? We either put them into the general population or we put them in more structured environments like this. So whether it's a affordable housing project where it's a navigation center or whether it's a project like this, you know, they're not just springing up these ideas out of thin air. You know, we have an obligation to serve these individuals. There are important public safety aspects for supporting projects like this. So when the rubber meets the road and we are looking at potential locations, please understand, whether it's in my district or another supervisor's district, we need this. So let's just soldier on and let's see how the site selection process goes.
Please come and help accentuate that at the meetings or even here when this comes.
Just say the word.
I will say, you know, I've been discussing this at many community events so far and surprisingly, I haven't received pushback so far. But I believe as we get closer to a site identification, that may change.
It becomes more real.
And I think it's because probation is onsite. I think if you mention that, that gives a lot of, you know, credibility to it. But also, it usually doesn't hit until it's like out somewhere in the paper or on the agenda here. It's like, no one ever told me. And so like, that's why it's important to have those. And I can help if it's in my district or with, you know, to get those meetings set up.
Did you just volunteer for your district?
I did. I better, because if it gets past me.
I just wanted to reiterate what has already been said, but it is needed here in the community. We're having conversations with behavioral health, everything else is going on. So yeah, I think it'll come. That conversation will get more intensified when we select the spot. So at least what I've heard all the way across the board is each one of us are supporting whatever district it ends up in or the cities, I think, to have that conversation as it needs to happen. So yeah, here to support you as we move forward with this project and RCHDC. Thank you for the work that's being done in Lake County already. There's the Collier Avenue project, right, being completed here pretty soon, which was on the books for what, contemplated for 20 years, 30 years, something like that?
Yeah, it's, we've been working on it for like about 20 years.
So, you know, that's very positive, you know, for the folks that are going into those homes. So all positive stuff. So yeah, in the district, positive stuff. So here to support that. Supervisor Crandall, because we do know the issue you were speaking of, we all went through it and it's needed. So just want to reiterate incomplete support.
Supervisor Green?
Just spitballing out loud as long as we're talking about it. We're here for a one-off project. Navigation Center's gonna be a one-off project. We haven't really had the opportunity to discuss co-location of facilities. And there may be, because we're doing a general plan update and area plan updates. I know we are not currently focused and maybe there would be disincentives from co-locating a facility like this to some other type of supportive housing, say through continuum of care and that process. But, you know, if we're just gonna do one-off site acquisitions, one by one, and look for those little targets of opportunities, it doesn't, you know, there should be some argument for a more linked approach to looking at all types of congregate housing in our master plan, in our general plan process through our area plans and also through agencies like yours. If you're developing projects that's all over the state and it's, and it's a constant drumbeat of, oh, I found a site, you know, let's hope it goes through. What can we do to be proactive and say, we're gonna have 20, 30, 40, 50 years of housing needs that if we took that longer view, could we co-locate some of these facilities and be more efficient, both with our land resources, but also with the blowback we're gonna get from various people? It may be a more supportive thing if we had more of a campus-type approach to some of these projects instead of looking for little corners of opportunity. And I'm just speaking out loud there. I don't want to burden this item with that long-range planning, but it seems like there's something we can and should do on that effort.
I don't disagree, but part of this project is, it's a bigger project than what we need, right? We asked for 20 and it's 40. So it will be two different, I mean, it won't just be probation individuals living in this housing development. So I think that does take consideration, at least part of that. Also, we want to locate sites that are close to the services that probation, behavioral health, social services already provides so that they can get, be close to resources. And so some of the ones that we've identified are very close to locations that we already use. So I think that will also help with some of that.
And I believe, so there's 20 for probation individuals that have insecure housing needs and the rest is 30% of median income or something like that, I believe was the criteria. Am I correct on that?
Well, thank you for the question, Chair. There's gonna be a variety of income limits there. The majority of the individuals coming out from probation are gonna fall in that 30% category just simply by, you know, being incarcerated for some time. I think the rest of it is gonna be income restricted. I think you'll see most likely from 80% AMI down, but more than likely 60% AMI and down just due to how the funding models work. We're still waiting for HCD to put out their current NOFA for this fiscal year to see where those roll. So I would assume 60% down on some of the units. And then the majority of the the units that are for probation would be 30, just simply because of the dynamics that come out of the probation department, lack of income, lack of ability to pay rent and stuff like that.
And I think the rest of the board has already spoken highly of the need. You can't get your feet back on the ground if you don't have the basic hierarchy of needs met and housing is definitely one of them with 30 or more percent that are experiencing housing insecurity. How can we expect recidivism to go down for those individuals? And I think this is a great idea. I appreciate the push that probation has had. You've done a lot and this is definitely one of those pieces to the puzzle. I want to speak specifics within the agreement. This is simple. There was some statements in regard of working with NorCal Continuum of Care in Section 4A1. That should be the Lake County Continuum of Care. It also speaks to coordinated entry process. Next to HMIS, we do have HMIS, but we use, or at least we use the terminology of coordinated entry systems. So if we can change, make an amendment to change anywhere where NorCal Continuum of Care is titled, because it's hard for me to do a search because it's not a searchable document, that we change that to Lake County Continuum of Care and anywhere that there's coordinated entry process or CEP, that we change that to coordinated entry system or CES, at least to match what the local COC has in their policies. There's two things that I wanted to talk about in regards to this. I don't mean to use history with the same agency, but we just talked about how 20-plus years, this is needed today. And so you talked of a timeline, but I don't see, and I know that putting a specific timeline is hard because there's the obtaining of other funds in order to make this possible, but I don't see any timeline saying, hey, if it's gonna take five years and we're still waiting, then maybe we need to look somewhere else to see who can get this project going. I don't want to be here 20 years later giving Lake County a resource that is so needed 15 years ago or 20 years ago. So I don't see anything in here and I would love to see some sort of check-ins on timelines to see what is it that we need to do? Do we continue the course or do we look for a different agency that might have the resources to get it done? I don't know what your capacity is. Obviously, you submitted your proposal because you believe you have the capacity, but I want to make sure this project happens. The other part, and I did receive through an email, thank you, some comments. I see where we give the $5 million, but I don't see any protection of the $5 million. It does mention that we, there will be reporting guidelines, talks about intellectual property, but at the same time, I'm not sure if that's a different contract where we talk about a developer contract, but I believe that developer contract is gonna be between this agency and the developer and not between the county and the developer. So I'm happy to provide as a pass-through the grant that we received in order to get this development done, but I also see no protections within the document where we can recoup whatever has not been spent. We've already been here before where a couple million dollars was provided for the Nice Collier Avenue project, where then we had to do some loan forgiveness stuff and it was an awkward moment. And I don't want to get back to that. And I feel like we, I personally would like to see us get it right within the agreement to ensure that if there is a complete cutoff, a default, or anything that doesn't go right, that we can- that we can speak specifically about the $5 million because we are liable for that $5 million. We are the grant recipient. We have to report on it and how it was utilized. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that, to me, is a big sticking point of how do I ensure if things don't go as planned, that there are securities within of the grant funds that we've received for what they should be utilized for rather than here? I don't see anything that basically says we have to give back everything if we haven't used anything and we're, I just, I don't see that within the context of the agreement. Again, I really want this project to happen. I just want to make sure that we're safe in how we move forward with this contract. So I don't know if you want to speak to that or if anybody else has a comment regarding that.
Yeah, so I want to touch on the 20-year deal real quickly. Unfortunately, the first, the first phase of Collier was hit with the 2008 housing collapse and the collapse of the fiscal markets, which almost took us out as an organization completely. So we do respect the issues surrounding that and the timeline of getting that project completed. So I respect that in this contract. In this contract, I know there's a, we agreed to a pretty, and I think legal counsel can speak to this for the county, we agreed to a pretty open termination clause in the contract. And I can't speak directly to whether or not it was ordered to where we would return the funds and any of the work product that was paid for with those funds, such as NEPA studies or SEQA studies, whatever wouldn't be needed for those types of projects to solve those issues, Chair Sabote, that we had previously with Collier. So I can't speak to that. I did not do the legal review myself. Our legal counsel worked with county legal counsel, but we'd be willing to change that wording to, you know, to satisfy the board's concerns.
So I'm wondering if Vice Chair Crandall?
Oh, you want to go through what you're doing first and then I'll?
I'm done. I'm looking for feedback either from Assistant CAO Carter or county council or just get a understanding of what the board thinks.
As to the termination, it is referenced in Section 8 of the MOU, but there's, there's multiple Section 8s. So I am currently in the process of looking through that termination clause.
Some page later.
So I'll just ask, I don't see it highlighted anywhere, but is this strictly going to be sought out for unincorporated areas or is incorporated areas also considered in this process?
We're considering every area that could qualify for the funding sources that are available. I think the largest thing we're seeing now is that as we're going through this, HCD changes the rules, tax credits change the rules and a lot of other funding sources that pop up for shovel-ready projects. And the way this agreement's working, it lets us have that shovel-ready project. So it's not just unincorporated. It could be incorporated. It could be in the city of Clear Lake, city of Lakeport or anywhere within the county that meets those somewhat strict requirements to leverage this public funding that's, that's been given.
And obviously if that was the case, you'd be working with those planning departments or community development departments in order to process the project.
Yeah, and I did last week meet with, I'm not sure of his title, yeah, Alan Flora at city of Clear Lake and he identified several lots in the city of Clear Lake that may be available for this project. On the other question, on page 13 of the contract also, I think it's 10I is the provision. It does give ownership of all the work in the project to the county. So if something were to happen and we've, we have purchased a lot, the lot would be the county's property, not going with RHCD or CHDC should the termination occur.
So I'll express my concern. It says that we'll receive anything that has been done, but it doesn't talk about what might be left over of the $5 million. And then in the termination clause, which is Section 8D, it says, the only time it mentions anything about money, in the event of non-appropriation of funds for the services provided under this MOU, county may terminate this MOU, but it doesn't say what we should be paid back. It does say a prorated amount for the services, but the services are the services of the project once the project is done. And so again, the $5 million is for the development. I'm concerned and want to make sure that our $5 million is safe. I feel there's things lacking in there and maybe it appears county council might be ready to speak on this.
Mr. Chair, you are correct. That's in referencing Section 8D of the MOU. It does provide for a no-cost termination with an additional clause for a prorated amount for services to be paid upon, upon termination, upon, under this provision. So if your board wishes to make amendments or revise that to add additional provisions to, in relation to that $5 million amount, your board certainly has the option to propose that amendment.
So my proposal is, because I appreciate what happened in the past, right now we just heard a economic forecast that we are seeing $925,000 average house prices or median in Napa. There could potentially be another 2008 situation. I don't want to be stuck trying to rebuild for 20 years. And so maybe putting a timeline of, let's say, maybe five years maximum. I don't want to restrict it to the point that you can't get things accomplished, but I'd like for this board to be able to re-review what's the status? Do we continue the course? It's not to say it's canceled, but at least put something in there that if five years has lapsed, that we go back to the board to review the continuation of this agreement. Something along those lines. Mr. Carter?
That would be something I would recommend, just to make sure that it continues through the process. And with the email that was sent from Mr. LaRue, it's all a little bit vague with, related to where, it's all related to the project and if the project isn't completed, then the remaining funds would be issued back. It's all a little vague, but it is acceptable language. So it would be really up to comfort levels.
And does it impact Section 8D or does Section 8D stand on its own? And I would love to see that amendment that county council offered could be there. But again, I'd like to go back to the board because if it's not a necessary thing, then I'm just talking for no reason. So Supervisor Green?
I would never accuse you of talking for no reason, if only to avoid pointing fingers at myself. If there's clarification, I would rather we not do it on the fly if the attorneys for the parties want to meet and confer and hammer something out. Vagueness aside, I think Assistant CAO Carter's said, yeah, we can probably do this. I just wanted to speak mainly in support of the housekeeping changes you recommended as far as the references to Lake County COC and HMIS CES to be changed throughout the document. I think those housekeeping changes make perfect sense and I'll wait to hear from the rest of the board whether they think anything stronger needs to go in that termination or performance clause.
Yeah, agreeing with what Michael Green just said on the other two, I agree with the five-year update or look back, bringing it to the board. I think that keeps everybody on track, you know, as far as that goes. So that's what I'll, I'm willing to agree with adding that into the agreement for sure. And then the other suggestions that you had made to continuum care and HMSI, we're learning all those new terms as we're trying to get HCD money every organization. And you're right, they change the rules all the time. So anyway, but I, but I would agree with keeping it on track for the five-year, at least the five-year bringing it back.
Getting a nod?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so the five years and with what Mr. Carter mentioned, we're comfortable with the way it's worded for the safety of the $5 million at this moment in time, is what I'm hearing as well?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I don't know what section would the five years be added to? I guess section?
Could you just bring it back?
Yeah, I was actually going to recommend that the resolution and all of those items that change, adjusting the budget be approved today, but let probation department, RCHDC, county council and my office just do a quick offline conversation and bring it back, the MOU next week with those changes.
All right, looks like there's consensus for that. And let me make sure and open it up for public comment if there's no further conversation at the board. And anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chamber, so bringing it back for the resolution.
Offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatana?
Aye.
All right, and we will take up Item C at a later time when this comes back and appreciate the conversation. And again, thank you for bringing this project to light.
Thank you.
And that concludes everything except for our weekly calendars. Oh yeah, closed session. We're open session that leaves nothing but the calendars. Since you already spoke up, Supervisor Green?
No pressure there. Speaking of housing for people in need, looks like the shelter Zoom tomorrow for our Hamilton Shelter in North Lakeport. Also tomorrow afternoon, let me see, I believe it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Clear Lake State Park. They are having a drop-in workshop at the visitor's center. So if you haven't been to Clear Lake State Park recently, they are doing a general plan update of their own, similar to our general plan and area plan updates. So if you love Clear Lake State Park or you just want an excuse to drive in and actually get to the visitor's center without paying a fee, tomorrow would be a great time to do that from 5:00 to 8:00, see what they're up to out there. And I have something on Friday that doesn't appear to be relevant. And then next Monday, Scotch Valley Community Advisory Council. I did want to mention, I went to a Big Valley Advisory Council meeting last week and it was very well-attended and I thought their process worked, worked in a good way. And speaking of last week, big shout-out to Water Resources again. The Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium was two days of data-driven goodness and also lots of networking opportunities. And of course, Friday evening, we saw the debut of the movie Big Lake, Big Science and, and the science slam. And it was just, it was a really well-attended, really well-organized event and I just want to do a shout-out, not just to Water Resources for all their hard work, but for all the partner agencies that came together. Good times.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Board meeting today, finishing up. Tomorrow, there is a debate in my district for District One down at the Lower Lake Action Committee Group. We'll be attending that in the evening, 6:00 PM. Moving through the rest of the week, got a CAO, is that going to be with you, Stephen, or Susan will be back?
To be determined. Hopefully.
To be determined, all right. Well, we got our communications going good, so, all right, excellent. And then I was unable to attend the RRA yesterday. Supervisor Pyska, thank you very much for always picking that up, but I had some unexpected stuff I had to deal with, so did do that. I was unable to attend yesterday. Friday night, you have the jamboree, so the local high schools are kicking off their football programs, which is nice, Beeld and Middletown. And then this weekend too, the pop Warner, second week for the little guys running around doing their things and the cheerleaders. So excited to see that. And then just the last weekend too was the soccer. Big kickoff, man. What an event. It was really neat. Looked more like a farmer's market and celebration, which was pretty neat down there in the Middletown area. So I'll be back on Tuesday, the 27th for our meeting here and yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, last week I had the quarterly meeting, which isn't quite quarterly anymore with PG&E, with RCD and CSAC. I think, I'm hoping that they will come here soon and talk, do a presentation on utility bills. Had a long conversation about that, so they say they will. We have a lot of conversations though to have locally. And then the RRA meeting yesterday was a good one. It, a lot of updates, but the, Julia Sullivan is the new executive director for the RCD and the Fire Safety Council, which is a really big deal because we've been working on capacity building for a long time. So that was the biggest thing that happened yesterday. And then today, if we're out by 4:00, which looks like we will, have a special NCO board meeting. And then tomorrow, another NCO board meeting, which I don't know if I can really make that. That's four hours in the afternoon and I think I have another 1:00 for the biomass project. And then Thursday, ARPA meeting in the morning and the RRA Grants Best Fit meeting is back. And Friday, Resilient Hub Work Group, Tree Mortality and meeting with the constituent. And Saturday is the Blackberry Cobbler Festival. It's also the Scotch Valley big time, but I don't think I'll be able to do both. But it sounds like you will.
Yeah.
You'll have to say hi to everybody if you're driving through. And then my meeting with CAO whoever on Monday.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah. So just highlight the symposium last week, which went really well. It was really awesome to see all of the different agencies, county, tribes and state agencies, nonprofits, NGOs, the community in general come together and, you know, have this event. Sam, great job with the Hobbiton movie. It provided a really good education session for people. I know a lot of times when you get out in the public or you go places, you hear people ask questions about the lake and, you know, what's going on with it? You had mentioned also the whole situation with NASA and all of that. And so people get these articles and these things and they don't, you know, this video, this movie answers some of those questions and puts people in a different mode where they can understand that somehow they can collaborate with that or get in further dialogue to how we can truly heal this lake. So I think it was a really wonderful event and just other discussions on how to tend to the land and all of those endangered species, talking about different birds, different landscapes. It just was really great to have. And if, you know, was it 15 years, they said, or 25 years? So yeah, we definitely have to make sure it happens again. Tomorrow, I have the Worth meeting. I'm meeting with special districts as well. Thursday, Clear Lake Oaks, I'll be in Clear Lake Oaks with a couple of folks over there with some issues and meeting with SLR, the, the contract that we went forward with to do the Scott Dam situation. And I have some meetings in Lakeport on Friday as well. Meeting on Monday with CAO or ACAOs or one of the other, you know, and then back here Tuesday. That's it.
All right, thank you. For tomorrow, I'm starting with Lakeport Shelter update as Supervisor Green mentioned. I believe there's a chief's meeting going on that day as well. I'll have to figure out where they are this time. They're only meeting every two months now, not every month. I will also be at the Candidates Forum in Lower Lake. Peg was invited, but Peg will be at the Western Region Town Hall. And so I have been asked to be the videographer. So I will be there for that. Very interested in listening as well. On Thursday, an ARPA meeting, meeting with the city of Clear Lake, that kickoff meeting with SLR regarding Scott's Dam and the study that we approved moving forward with. And then meeting with Lake County, County Community Foundation regarding the Food Policy Council later on that evening or afternoon. Friday, looking at Hope Rising meeting, meeting with Sutter to discuss some of the shelter status and how we can better collaborate together on that. And then we'll be discussing the pick count with Ms. Katie Ray to make sure that we follow up on what we did last year and ensuring that we are inclusive of all of the tribes and getting those that are experiencing homelessness counted and doing that in the best and most appropriate ways. And on the 24th, I'll be in Austin Park. And on the 24th, I'll be in Austin Park, where they'll be playing American Graffiti and having a car show. And then coming back here on Monday, meeting with CAO Parker and getting ready for our 27th meeting. And that is all for me.
Mr. Chair, I did miss something, and I just want to make a comment, and maybe it was made last week, but.
Oh, it's not that.
Sorry, a lot of schools are back in, back in session. Just, please slow down around the schools, pay attention to the crosswalks, you know, be coherent to where you are, especially with the kids going back to school, I think just real important. We're all so busy and moving so quickly, but, man, some of our schools are in challenging areas, so please slow down around the schools, especially in my district. Seems like we built them on the road. We've got a lot of work to do, but just be, be aware of where you are, what time it is a day, not only in the morning, but in the afternoons when you're going home. Just wanted to kind of do a public announcement. And then forgot to announce that I will be meeting with our new representative, Matt Barnes from UCC-E, and a beneficial, the leadership and HERC beneficial burning and land stewardship candidate on Friday and dual tour, so I forgot to mention that.
And just to add to your comment about the schools, I think that a couple of our school districts are in the midst of construction as well, which adds to some of the situations of drop-off and pickup.
Yeah.
That makes things a little bit more difficult. I know that I've been going to Lower Lake High School every day, and it's a new way of dropping off that I've never experienced before. So go early, leave early, and make sure you have time. There is one, oh, before I add?
If I can add on to that, not just the furball at the schools, but school buses. When those flashing red lights are there, it is not an invitation to speed around them. And I know that's a perennial problem here in Lakeport, so please, if you see a school bus and they're out there with the little crossing sign, or you see the flashing red lights, that still means something, so please observe that.
You mean stop, mean stop? I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the board was aware that next week on the 28th, 29th, it's Thursday, right? Or is it Wednesday? Wednesday, the 28th. I'm so sorry, because Thursday's the Board of Directors meeting. CSAC has asked to come and visit Lake County, so Bruce Gibson, who is the current president of CSAC from San Luis Obispo, is going to be coming up with chastity. I don't know if there will be other staff. I've been working with admin staff to organize an agenda, and I've invited Supervisor Pisca to be a part of it, as she is a representative of Lake County at CSAC. And I also invited Vice Chair Crandall, since he is the vice chair, to also talk about some of the projects that we're working on. I think next week I will bring and let everybody know what our, not agenda, but what topics we'll be touching on. We're going to finalize that. We're probably pretty close to completely done, but I thought it was a great opportunity to exemplify all the work that we're doing here in Lake County and make sure that CSAC leadership goes back and understands exactly what it is we're trying to get accomplished, what our struggles are, and how they might be able to assist us to better be successful. So appreciate staff's help on this, appreciate the other supervisors being available and wanting to participate, but I'm excited about the visit and just wanted to make sure the rest of the board was in the know that that was working, that was being put in place. Outside of that, we have our closed session. We have one item, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, Savak Jimenez versus County of Lake. And that will be the item we take up. I do not believe that we anticipate to come out of closed session.
There's a possibility.
There's a possibility, okay. So if you want to wait for us to be done with closed session, please hang on, and we'll be back, but we are going to closed session for that item now. Thank you very much for joining us today.